We'll dive into the workshop. So, we are reconvened. Part two for our workshop. Ann, do you want to kick us off here, please?
Certainly, Mayor.
Thank you.
There are a couple of things that maybe you may want to go ahead and address now. And then, I know there's a lot of interest in discussing certain other items.
Right.
By council. Deb did just distribute the green sheet, referenced the green sheet about the motion. So that we would be allowed to budget and pay for out of the building fee fund, the Sunshine State One and Central locating services cost. And so, we are requesting that council would make this motion and pass it.
And what is that? I'm sorry.
These are the services that we have to pay when someone pulls a permit and they're going to do some building and they have to identify the utilities that are within the property. And so, we have to pay for that.
I got you. Thank you very much for that.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, so, we need council's authorization on this. You need to approve this because you're making a finding that these are appropriate. And this is the mechanism we use to be able to use some of those building fees that we've not been able to in the past for these specific activities.
Second.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. There's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this only? Okay.
Yeah, just are we going to go back and look at other ways to recoup, get some stuff?
We've done a lot of that. We will continue to look at that. We think we've gone as far as we can go, but we'll continue to look.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye. Okay. Ann, do you have more items at the moment, or do we want to drill down? Time for the drill down, or not quite yet?
Certainly. On the green sheet, there are suggested motions because we had detailed everything in these spreadsheets. And when these motions are considered, we certainly will, the motion would reference that as adjusted for the action that you take this evening. Because you've already taken some action that changes some of the things on these spreadsheets.
Council, anything for Ann on what she's covered thus far?
Just a question. I guess my question is, is we've done a few things already with it being the TNR and so forth. Is that money just going to, where is that being kind of transferred from? Is it getting added to? I know we'd given staff a goal of being at the 12-point whatever million. It's just getting added to that and it will go, come out of, hate to use the word reserves, but out of that?
It'll...
Fund balance, out of the fund balance? It's just going to get moved around into fund balance until we decide what's...
It will be added as expenditures in the general funds.
Right, but it will come from the fund balance.
Well, right now, we have revenues in excess of expenditures.
Okay, that's what I mean. That's where it's going to come from. That's all I was, got you. We're not taking it from somewhere else. Right now, we have excess funds as we see.
That's correct.
Based on what we've tasked you to do.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, council, are we ready? I think we're ready. We're more than ready. Okay, if I, I'm going to get us kicked off here, if you don't mind. As many of you know, I've been out of town and I was on an airplane today. If I sound like I'm talking like Rudolph, the red-nosed reindeer, my ears have still not cleared from being 30,000 feet or whatever, but interesting, well, my son and I were, you know, sitting down and a gentleman joined us in the row. And of course, we were up in New Hampshire. We were flying out of New Hampshire. I said, "Oh, where are you from?" You know? And then, "Where are you from down in Florida?" I said, "Are you on vacation?" And he goes, "Well, I live in Naples." I said, "Oh, I live in Benita Springs." And he looked at me. Says, "Actually, I live in Benita Springs, but I said Naples because nobody knows where Benita Springs is generally." You know where this is going, I think. But as recent as today, said that. And I said, "Do you mind if I use this example in our discussion tonight?" And he said, "No." So, I'm going to kick this off with this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make them, I just, I just don't believe this monument is going to cost $450,000. So, I'd like to slash that request to $300,000. I just, because we already have 60,000 set aside, Carl, correct? So, this number, if I say 300, the number's really 360? Is that correct? For, from last year's budget, correct?
Yeah. I'll have to check.
It's carryover, right?
Carryover.
We haven't done anything with it.
I'm sorry, Carl, but I just wanted to make that clear before. Because if, because if there is already 60 from last year, which we approved, I really want to make that number 240. 240 plus 60 to equal 300.
I don't believe we've spent any of that money, right?
That's correct. We do have the Highway Monument welcome.
Right.
From last year's budget, $60,000.
FY '17, that's correct. That's correct.
So, to get to 300, we would have to approve, or in my mind, 240 to get to 300?
And this is for the Highway Monument?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Highway Monument only, because there was discussion about the potential of, just using those funds to study something on Hickory Island as well and the flagpole. So, this would be the monument only.
This is on I-75 only. Okay, so, I'd like to slash that number of 450 to 240 to kick us off.
With, with the caveat of the 60,000 from this year being a designated carryforward to that line item.
Right. It'll total 300.
Correct.
For 300 total, correct.
I just want to make sure, because...
Yep. Do we want to vote on these individually? I guess we kind of have to, right? Okay. I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion?
One question.
Fred.
Are the flagpoles still in this?
Yeah, no, that's...
Separate.
Separate.
That's further drill down. All right. Thank you, buddy. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Team, thank you. I'm really looking forward to this. Thank you very much. I'm going to keep going here, if you guys don't mind.
Change of...
And if you do, oh, well. Page eight. Sorry. I've only got a few things and then we're going to move on.
Back page.
Just trying to keep us alive here. The flagpole, and this is, I am all in favor of this. I just keep having these same thoughts. Is it really going to cost us 40,000? I want it a million percent. I think it's important. But I don't have a specific number in mind. Can somebody just refresh me a little bit? Do we really, and I hate to say this, Carl, do we really think it's going to cost 40 grand to accomplish what we're doing? What we want to do?
We have, we've taken an initial look at what it's going to take for a flagpole. It's going to have to be as tall as it needs to be to handle the size of flag that we've been talking about. It is an issue of weight of the flag, wind load, all those kinds of things. And the flagpole itself is actually the most critical part. It's not the flag. It's the pole that holds it up.
Right.
Plus, the infrastructure underground, the foundation that's going to have to be poured. It's more complicated than it looks.
Okay.
Because you certainly don't want the thing blowing over.
Right.
That research, I did personally.
Yep.
I did the best I could to find...
No, 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 that's fine.
Flag suppliers, flagpole suppliers. And I was actually, kind of like you, kind of astounded by the costs that we were looking at. Yeah, you know, this is like anything else. I mean, if you wish to take the number down now, and when we're, when we actually get to it and the number's higher and council's willing to do a supplemental appropriation, you know, then, then we can accomplish it that way, if you will. But, right now, it looks like that could be that number.
Okay.
And I'm hoping it's not too low.
No, okay. Does that include lighting, Carl? To light it up at night?
No.
It doesn't?
No.
Yeah, and you got to have it light, or you take it down.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, okay. Well, then, I'd like to make a motion to approve $40,000 for the flag on I-75. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Discussion, yeah.
I believe when we talked about that, I think we can get a better price for the flag from the American Legion.
Great.
We're assuming that.
And can we work with Councilman Slakka on that?
Yeah, we've assumed that.
Yeah.
That's been mentioned before. We were fine with that.
Fantastic. Thank you. Fred?
Do you have, are we talking about one, one at the south, one at the north, or just one at the north?
Just one total, right, Carl?
This is, this is one flag. If you want two, then, of course, you can double the cost unless we can get...
I've got your free location at the south, right at the corporation line, almost.
Okay. Okay.
With electricity.
Okay. Thank you. So, for this, for the one flag, location to be determined. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye. Okay. In the spirit of slashing, I don't believe there's much wrong with the bridge on 41. I think the line of sight is good. And I'm not picking on you, Peter. What I'm trying to say is here, I, I want to do something nice there, but I don't think it's going to cost 250,000.
No, it is...
Yeah, no, 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 absolutely. I just, in the spirit of what we're doing here.
Right.
Do you, do you feel strongly about a number less than that?
No.
What, what do we think, Carl? Because I, what I don't want to do, I want to make it look nice, but I don't want to, look, when you go over that bridge, it's beautiful. You can look to the west, you can see the sun, depending on the time of day. You look right down the Imperial River. If you look east, you know, you look, obviously, you look down the Imperial River as well. The line of sight, I, I think it's very important to keep the line of sight very good. I think maybe preaching the obvious there. But we can do a little something. We can maybe with the lanes and for the bikers and the safety, but what I don't want to do is I don't want to overburden the process for the line of sight. And Fred, you had a comment on that.
Well, yeah, the comment I would make, I kind of had a proposal, whatever, I think the ugliest thing about that bridge, but also the one that goes over Spring Creek on 41, is the ugly Jersey barriers. And if we put the most beautiful thing in the middle, it's still going to be horribly detracted by those Jersey barriers. So, what I would recommend is the first thing we do is get our guys that designed the Jersey barriers for Old 41 Bridge to re-engineer that for the higher traffic speed, find out what it would cost. And if we did anything to either bridge, do that first. And while we're at it, we don't have any barrier on the Imperial Parkway Bridge over the Imperial River, and we own that damn bridge, so.
Just a, yeah, just a suggestion or a comment, which is, we've been working on this for six months with Art in Public Places, been working on it with San Vincent, Arlene's put a lot of quality time into this, threw a lot of bright ideas that have come forward. I take this to be a budget process, not a time to, unless council wants to do it, redo all the work we've done in six months. So, I'd rather just stick with what the project is, with the understanding that it's clearly going to come back before council, and any member of council who wants extensive input can give extensive input. So, I don't know what the number is. I mean, this number got picked like that, right? Make it 150? I don't care. But I, but I wouldn't sit here right now in the budget process redoing six months of design work.
Okay. I had a number of 100 in mind, but that's, but that's for discussion. So, I'd like to make a motion for 100,000? I'm sorry.
A second for discussion.
Yeah. And there's been a motion and a second. Discussion.
The only, the only question I got, and I don't want to redesign it, I guess with the six months that you guys have done, is that going to be enough with the ideas that Art in Public Places have had? That, that, I guess that's my question.
The short answer, I think that's a $60 question, Greg. And I, we don't know the answer to that.
Okay, because I, I mean, just thinking out loud, and I didn't, I don't want to per se rain on the parade, but...
Right.
I mean, you know, a mural may look good versus whatever. That's where I'm going with money-wise. If Art in Public Places are, or is adamant to say, "We need to get rid of the Jersey barriers," then this may not be enough.
Well, the Art in Public Places focus in the last few months has been on the median.
Okay.
And trying to do something special. And this came before council, by the way.
No, I know. I remember that, and we talked about the dolphins and all that.
So, and the notion was that that would make more of an impact in terms of aesthetically improving. What it costs, we don't know.
Okay. Well, I just don't want the Art in Public Places, I guess my fear is, is Art in Public Places come back and your board comes back and says, "We really feel strongly and we all love whatever you guys come up with," and like, we're $100,000 short now.
Yeah, well...
I know we can pull it out of other places.
Yeah, but we can always deal with that.
We can always do it over two years.
We can do it over time. The only thing I would ask on this and other things, I mean, this is a good process, but if we can, let's try to, when we start something, work it through the process we start.
Oh, I agree.
Not, because otherwise, what's going to happen is people on boards are going to turn off, all right? Because they're going to say, "Well, wait a minute. We spent all this time, it came to council, it was talked about on council, certain people made suggestions, certain people, it's a work in progress, and if we just like, like that, forget it. We're not doing that. We're just doing this." They're going to say, "Next time around, well, thank you."
No, and that's kind of what I'm, I'm getting at. I don't want to do that by lowering it so much that we've tied their hands that they can't do what they want.
Well, I don't, we don't have, we don't have a feel for what this costs. We don't. All right.
So, and I hate to use the, not hate to use the, so, this may be like a $60,000 placeholder where the monument was last year. Maybe not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, it may be. So, 100,000 to get it kicked off?
So, I, I make a motion that we continue with what we have, I shouldn't say continue what we have. This is a budget here, and this is not a design.
Right, right, right.
All right. I, I make a motion on US Bridge Beautification for 100,000.
And second that, and I think Greg, third on that. Further discussion? Fred?
One last point. I, I still think we should at least let this great design company that we've hired be able to weigh in on this.
Absolutely. But I don't think that's, with all respect, I don't think that's today's conversation. There's a lot of people who can weigh in.
Yeah, but they're the experts.
Well, we'll be the final say of that expert, so, yeah.
But Carl's already indicated the urgency.
Great, great. Okay. So, 100,000, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay. I'm looking at Add to Urban Design, page five of minutes. Is this quote unquote the DeWitt wall?
No.
No.
It's not.
I've got a green sheet on that.
Because I, okay, so, my mistake is I, okay. Fred, see now, I've touched on the DeWitt wall. Will you touch on it?
No.
Green sheet?
I think it was the last of my item, but I, I propose, I believe, that we put in $65,000 to develop a good landscape wall. And I specifically said east or west of VSU and all that, I pretty well, and I said, "But we need to work it in when, with the Alta, when they're doing that initial," so we don't do something that gets tore out. We need to get that...
I would like to second that, but out of respect, Greg, would you like to second that?
I'll second it with discussion, because...
Okay.
This, we discussed this before, and at the, I guess you called it the bequest of Matt Feeney and the city manager, we've kind of put it on hold right now because we don't know which pro, we know now which project's going to be concentrated on, which is probably from the middle school out to US 41. That section...
Do you want to hold on it for now?
Well, I'm just saying...
Because I, I miss, see, I thought that's what it was, so that's why I brought it up.
Well, I don't think we'll be, I don't, and I'll ask Matt Feeney about it, or to the city manager, that may be a two years down the road before they even get to that project.
Okay.
And to be quite honest, from the numbers that Director Feeney got back, 60,000 is nowhere near enough money to do that wall. I think they, at one point, I was told it was almost 20,000 just for the sprinkler system and tying into it.
Matt Feeney, Public Works Director, for the record. To answer, answer Councilman DeWitt's first question, yes, right now, West Terry Street is, is what we've solicited a proposal for, amongst other things, for Alta Design. A way to approach this could be to ask for a conceptual design in that area, which would then allow you to understand where you could put the vegetative buffer. It is an issue of space. There is limited space in that area that is public right away. So, to design a landscaping buffer absent knowing where the multi-use path should go, you may not need a final design, but, but you need to have an understanding for Alta as to how much available space you have to use for berms or, or for vegetation and that combination. Because a berm can take up a pretty sizable footprint. So, there might be a path forward where you, we solicit a scope of work, where you can get a conceptual layout that allows the landscaping to go forward. As far as costs, landscaping can vary. Irrigation is a sizable component, but I don't have anything formal to react to, to tell you, you know, part of this is you can tell your designer, "I have $65,000 to work with." You know, what can we do for that type of money?
But again, if we're going to get, if, if that's not going to be constructed or done for two years, I just, I'd hate for us to construct this wall, then knock it down, then knock it down, or beat the heck out of it while we're doing something.
Are we back to a wall?
I was, yeah, you know, vegetative design, buffer.
Yeah.
I just had to, you know me.
Yeah.
I'll just tweak them a little bit, the DeWitt wall, so that's what, you know. All right, and I brought, and I brought it up inadvertently because I thought that's what it was. So, why don't we just...
I just, just wanted to point, there, there could be a, if you wanted to accelerate the idea of the buffer, you could get a conceptual layout so that you knew what space was available so that you could advance that a little faster.
Yeah.
So, that it, it would probably be on the tail end of the year, but it wouldn't be too...
Why don't we take that out of the, I'm sorry, Amy.
No, I was just going to say, I, I think we should just drop this for now.
Yep, I agree.
Get a conceptual idea, and we could always bring it back to the council. We're not going to do it anyway. And if we had to do it like 30,000 for design and then 30,000 for construction in the following fiscal year, we can still do it. It will come up, but at least, I don't think, I think it's not prudent to go forward unless we understand what we're going to do all along there.
Absolutely. And sorry I brought it up, but glad we started the discussion. All right, so, I'm done on my drill down for now. I have more items.
What are we doing on that one?
What are we doing? How we, on what?
Well...
On how we're drilling down?
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, I...
Well, we got a motion on the floor. Fred gave it, and...
What's the motion, Fred?
Well, I just made the motion that we put 65 in to cover the...
Landscaping.
Vegetated buffer with a berm and all that. And if you want to reduce it down some to get the conceptual design and all that done, that would, you could do that.
Well, I think, I'll go back to my original comment. I don't think, to do that, I don't think 65,000 is enough, based on numbers that we got two, a year ago, year and a half ago.
That was for a wall, though.
It was for both. If you remember, they both came to council, and it was a, a concrete wall like on Piva, and it was a vegetative wall.
Right, right.
And then, it was, pulled out of the budget when we all got on budget, when we got on line. And then, I believe it was one of our sentences, Jesse Purdon brought it back up, and I think that's when, again, Director Feeney and I spoke, and they were like, "Let's hold off because if we do it this year, or push it forward this year, we may have to tear it down the next year because of the Alta design."
Let me make a suggestion and cover something else at the same time. There's a number in here, and somebody asked, maybe it was Greg, what's the urban design number?
Yeah.
That's in it, all right? And this is one example of it. In other words, to have an adequate amount of money in there so we can make an impact in the city on urban design, on projects that really have to be deciphered. And this could be one of them.
Yeah, as I say, instead of putting it towards a buffer and a wall, let's put maybe half that money into this urban design with the concentration being in that area.
That's what he's got.
Yeah.
That's what he's got. But that's the concept of urban design, and it might be, my hope, and I hope all of our hopes, would be, if these guys at Alter are as good as we think they are, they're gonna have some bright ideas, and it's hopefully gonna be cost efficient.
Yes.
And we can deal with that stretch, but we can also deal with a whole bunch of walls around there and soften them.
That was the idea originally.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
I just wanna follow up on urban design, because I think Mike pointed out that he was confused over all the aggregation.
Yeah, earlier.
I do think we need a review of all these items that we added into so that we can focus on, like, park, urban design, and I think we should at least make a list of them so we understand.
How about any?
Well, but we need to have some con, I mean, I agree with this point that you brought up, but I think we wanna know, have a more concrete idea of what we want for the product, you know.
And that, we gotta get that ball going, and I think we're hoping that Alter is gonna lead the way on that, even though their specialty is bike paths, but part of what they do is urban design in that context. Is that fair, Arlene?
Yes, so we've started some preliminary conversations about scoping with Alter Design, and number one, of course, being the Terry Street project and design concepts, but also citywide design guidelines for bicycle pedestrian pathways, and what that means as far as pocket parks, street furniture, rest stations, but features that could be used, and they have a similar product that they've done for other communities, that's a guidebook, per se, not necessarily a beauty book, but guidebook of what best practices are to, of features and implements that should be looked at in each pathway that we look at. With the Terry Street being our signature piece.
But this is a great example.
Right.
Because I think we all agree, let's start doing stuff, we're studying a lot. So, yeah.
And the idea is that those projects would happen simultaneously. The first is the demonstration project, the West Terry, get that going, have the design workshop, where we can see those features in real place, in real time, but then continue the process of implementing what the other pathways should look like. So those then can be implemented into the land development code as requirements for private, for development, as well as when city projects are done.
Fred, I know you brought it forward, but Greg, I wanna ask you, what are your thoughts on putting a number on it this year?
The sixty-five's fine, just for that design, I just, yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
There's been a motion, and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakto? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
All right, now Greg's waited long enough.
Absolutely.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Drumma?
Aye.
Great, absolutely, great work, okay. I have more, but I'm not gonna hog the microphone, no, go ahead, Fred.
Well, I've got a, I've got a few here, one of them is, number one, is to set aside and this.
What page, Fred, and I'm sorry.
This is very first item on my
Okay.
green sheet.
Sorry, just wanna make sure everybody knows where we are.
And it was, I had proposed a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you could make it a hundred, and that is to get this darned impact study going, because every month we don't get the impact fees raised, is money lost, and it gives you the opportunity to separate out bike paths and walk paths from the road impact fees, so net, we would pick up a lot of money out of the study.
And we put the money in, Fred, but then we have to scope it.
Yes, that's right, we have to scope, absolutely, yeah.
I get a question whenever we, I don't know if you wanna make the motion.
I'll make the motion so we can get it under discussion.
Yeah.
Has been a motion, is there a second? Greg, second?
My question's to, I believe Carl, I know in my other life that Lee County has to do one, do we have to do one separate of Lee County, or can we do it, piggyback it, or can we just use theirs, if we're happy with it?
I know, I know, I can see Audrey wanting to jump in on this. I think we can do it, we can actually piggyback onto the county's effort. In fact, they just, they just took action on their study yesterday at their meeting. We absolutely can do one of our own, okay? And I think what we'd need to be careful about in working with the county is that you have to, you have to produce a list of projects you wanna work on.
Right.
That really drives your impact fee rates, and that certainly impacts them. If the county's list, when you spread it out across the county, if that drives our number down, that's not good for us.
Right.
So I'd recommend, if you're going to do this, that you do it separately.
Okay.
Because I think, whether you went and looked at it at lane miles, you would look at it per capita, whatever, our number could be higher than what the county's average across the board might be. That would be my only caution on that. Audrey, I'm sorry.
Carl is correct, but let's go a little bit different detail here, and that is, there's only two entities that do these type of impact fee studies. One is Duncan, the other is Tindale Oliver, and I did have a question, are you applying this just for road impact fees or also for parks and rack?
The whole schmally.
The whole, yeah, okay, good.
Well, sure.
Because our ordinance also requires evaluation every couple of years, and going forward with the evaluation, and we've always done separate, they will look at construction prices here locally, they will look at our projects as opposed to the county's, and we have amended the ordinance to provide additional uses such as multi-pathways, and that was not something that was in the last time we looked at impact fees.
Here we have that in.
And that, right, and that's both for parks as well as for roads.
Roads. So it may not be, Fred, that when we scope it, we're gonna want a separate one.
No, no, I just offered that as
Possibility.
looking at, because if they would say we could come out better off, you could always delete that ordinance.
Now, what happened last time was, we did allow roads that were not city jurisdictional roads and entered into an interlocal agreement with Lee County for a shared use for improvement of that particular road, Benita Beach Road, and that's something that we may wanna revise.
Yeah, I'd like to say this, that council said, oh, let's not do this now, because we'll piggyback. Well, guess what, the county's already doing it, it's too late to piggyback. So if we wanna do this, we either gotta do it now or make up our mind, we're gonna be sitting around for a couple more years before.
Well, we can piggyback on their prices, more so, I think, what Carl's talking about. We don't have to piggyback on their fees, but we can, hey, you're doing the county, you're already down here, what kind of deal would you give us on that?
And it will be a separate fee, I mean, traditionally, we have gone with Duncan and Associates, and it has been a separate fee.
And this, and this figure is, Audrey probably has a better idea what it would run, and I think it'll be at least seventy-five or a hundred, won't it?
I could.
We don't know right now.
We don't know until we talk.
There's been a motion, and a second, do we have further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Drumma?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, what was the number on that?
One twenty-five.
One?
One twenty-five.
It was one, yeah, on the green sheet, it was one twenty-five.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And you may wanna keep it higher, or you may wanna look at additional fees, that they could also do the calculations.
Right, thank you, Fred? What else?
Another one that I have.
Ann had a comment.
Some of these are really small.
Ann, hold on, Fred. Just a second, Fred, Ann.
Just for clarification, the green sheet references in the capital budget, but this would actually be a general fund item, because it's not a capital project.
Okay.
It could be treated for road impact fees, you can pay for impact fee studies out of road impact fees, or out of parks and racks, whichever's applicable.
So.
We don't have to, we don't have to hit the general fund with this?
If there's a funding available from other restrictive sources, such as through the fee that they're actually doing the study, it could be built in as part of the price of the fee. No different than financing and bonding.
Okay, thank you.
Fred, the drill down continues.
Okay, next, next one is real simple, is to add ten grand to the street lighting program so that they can do Pennsylvania.
Second?
I have a discussion. We do have, like, a streetlight committee, right? And do we have a budget item for going, regularizing the lighting? Do we have that at all now in the budget? I didn't, I couldn't find it. I know we had it for the, it was in the two thousand and seventeen budget, we had an item, but we used it all up, right?
Matt Feeney, for the record, yes, we do have a streetlight committee, I am the staff liaison, public works director for the committee, and this ten thousand dollar item is in the proposed capital budget for recessed Cobra heads. I believe what Councilman Forbes is asking for is to supplement it with an additional ten thousand dollars. For your reference, we have basically standardized the lights from Hickory Boulevard through to Wisconsin Street with the recessed Cobra heads through three years of this program, I believe it's three years, might be four. Ten thousand dollars does about twenty lights, so to add ten thousand dollars, just you basically added another twenty lights that can be retrofitted.
I have just a question about the process. With the streetlight committee, do you prioritize what lights you should do next, or what's the, do you have a strategy for how you're gonna change these over?
Basically, we're mid-strategy, to answer your question, it started, I took over the committee after John Guciaro left, and they really focused primarily on the beach because of the issues with fugitive light and turtles or the potential for that. So that was kind of the overarching strategy, was to come off of the beach and carry down Benita Beach Road. They're basically to a point where they've carried it fairly far on Beach Road, and you get into our architectural lights along the corridor, so they're, they're looking for new corridors. They've actually talked about Pennsylvania Street, because we've had requests to consider that. They're considering it, our last meeting, actually, the last two meetings, the members have kinda looked around and thought about that, and we agreed to meet in September, and they'll be making some recommendations, the individual members, but this is on their radar screen, this would, it would just give you more distance along Pennsylvania that the lights could be replaced.
The reason why I asked you is because I didn't, I don't think it's appropriate if we sort of jump ahead of some other plans from the, from the streetlight committee, and I also would like to know, like, where we're going with this, how many more of these do we have, how many, you know, how many lights do have to be replaced and what our plans are?
To quote Robert Frost, we have miles to go before we sleep. I have a map of the lights, if you'd like to see, they're all over, they're FPNL lights, and they are all over the city. Really, where we are is, we're in a, the strategy has transitioned, they've kinda got where they wanted to with that first strategic approach, and they're, they're already looking at this corridor, recognizing that it kinda goes into the downtown, the issues that have been raised along Pennsylvania, so this is kind of where they're leaning already.
Okay, all right, then I'm good with, I'm good with it.
Very good, Matt. Any other quotes while we're at it, or?
We've got more to go.
This is make good neighbors.
We got miles to go.
Here.
Fred? Actually, no, I'm sorry, there's been a motion, and a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn? Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Drumma?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakto?
Fred?
Yeah, another, another one, it's actually such a small item, it's almost embarrassing to put it up, but it was brought to my attention that even though on most of the days that you decorate graves, that for some reason on Veterans Day, the, we have veterans' graves that are not getting flowers in the marker. And it was proposed to me by actually former council lady Martha Simons and her husband, that we consider providing to the Veterans Committee two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars to make sure there's a grave marker with the little flag on each one of the veterans' graves in Manhage Springs.
Which cemetery are we talking about?
The, I think we only have one public one, don't we?
The one over on, plus of Imperial?
Each road in Imperial?
Yeah.
Is that, is that a public?
I'm not sure that that's a public cemetery, I believe it's privately owned.
It used to be, I thought it was the First Baptist Church that owned it.
And the Methodist, half and half.
At half and half and Methodist, yeah.
I just have a comment.
Amy.
Okay. It's a very laudable thing to do here, and I wanna get your feedback, because you are the liaison to the Veterans Agency Committee, is I do think that for these small little things, they shouldn't be a placeholder, you know, and this is what we're doing here, and it's such a small amount, it seems to me that the Veterans Committee or the various agencies could cover this, and we could just, by discussion, get this accomplished. What is your thinking?
My thinking is, well, this has not come up at our Veterans Advisory Committee, I know I missed the meeting or so, but it hasn't come up, has it?
Sorry, Communications Director, I am the liaison currently with Kindra to the Veterans Advisory Committee, and no, we have not discussed this at length, it's definitely something they could discuss and talk with our American Legion and other partners to see if there would be something that they could.
Thank you, I just wanna make sure. Amy, I agree with you, there's, I don't see any reason why our Veterans Advisory Committee, we do have some money in, and our, and we got some money with the American Legion, so I would not, you know, we're gonna do something, but keep it out of the budget.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I don't, I don't have, I'll even donate to it if you run short, how's that?
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Fred, another item?
Yeah, another item that I had was that we should, I, because this kinda got changed around on the bridge, we do not have a Jersey barrier on the bridge we own and paid good money to get it built. I guess it was an oversight, and I think we at least oughta put some money in the budget to get it designed. We don't have to go to FDOT because it's a city, city-owned bridge, but we need, right now.
Which bridge is that?
What bridge?
Pardon? Which bridge would that be?
The one that goes over the Imperial, on Imperial Parkway. So I think, I think we ought to at least put twenty, twenty-five grand in there, so Matt can work with some design people. The odds are, we can really duplicate what's on forty-one, 'cause the design speeds are very close to the same. Although Matt suggested we might, even though it's posted for thirty-five, design it for forty or forty-five.
What's the number you're proposing?
Well, I propose twenty-five grand, what do you, what do you think, Matt?
Is that just for the design, or is that for the construction?
Well, that would be a design, and let's see what he says. What do you think it would cost?
Feeney Public Works Director, for the record, the, the bridge is the Imperial River Bridge on Imperial Parkway, which is a portion of the city-owned part of Imperial. It does not have a Jersey barrier, I do not know the details of the design, but it very well may have been because the design speed of the road was such that it did not require it, perhaps when the given regulations were. Twenty-five thousand, may, may not, I don't know what it would do for, for design, but.
What do you think it'll take to build one?
I just said, I want an education on bridges and, and the need for barriers. I'm sure there's some, Department of Transportation regulation in that regard, and before we start spending money, I'd like to have that more investigated, I would not be in favor of this until we have a lot more information.
If I might, I mean, along that line of thinking, it would be the design engineer and what methodology was used for that bridge, I wasn't here when the bridge was designed.
Can you put cables or something that might be okay, and just adequate, I mean, we want it safe.
We want it safe, and we have to have a design, and it has to be designed for traffic speed, yeah. So what, what do you think?
I mean, if it was created and it's safe then, how's it not safe now and the speed did not change?
Right, exactly.
Well, if it was safe now, then why did we put them on the old forty-one bridge, the two bridges on forty-one?
Catastrophic.
I can guarantee the traffic speed on old forty-one is not gonna be as fast as Imperial Parkway.
I think going back to Amy's question, who regulates the safety on bridges, and do they re-inspect them from time to time?
FDOT has design standards, the engineer who designed that bridge most certainly reviewed the design of that bridge at the time, which would have been prior to two thousand and seven, when they were developing those designs, it may have been as early as two thousand and two. Standards do change, I don't know whether that is the case.
Probably a function of that, the allowed speed as well, not just the design speed, and as you know, it's slower there.
Could we just give direction to staff to check this out and give, come back with us information? I think we're jumping the gun here.
Fred, would that be okay?
Yeah, I think we need to find, I think we need to find out if, because like I said, if we had to put it on old forty-one bridge, and it's slower, and you couldn't go there, and it's not even a multi-lane.
No, that's good, and we still have time, Ann, correct? If we don't drill down on this one item today, we can get to it before September.
The only issue I have with this is, we have, for example, up by Paradise, the, what's the, man, what's the road that goes across from Paradise to Cockle Shell up top?
Maddox.
Maddox, yeah. You know, there are places where people are asking for pathways, not bike pathways, just safe sidewalks and such, and I wouldn't, unlike.
Longfellow and Goodwin.
Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff, and what strikes me about this is, there's no process associated with it, it's just, I think we should have a Jersey barrier on that bridge, I don't, it just doesn't seem.
All you have to do is be logical, if you had to put them on the old forty-one bridge, why wouldn't, why wouldn't this bridge, which is a multi-lane road, which allows higher speed?
And if we had to put, we put in sidewalks on certain streets, why don't we put on every street? The issue is the budget, and the issue is priorities within that budget.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd rather take the twenty-five and do a study on sidewalks, on Goodwin and Longfellow, who have already expressed interest, 'cause it's halfway through the American House.
Because we're liable if somebody gets wiped out by a car going.
Matt, can you check it out, and we will have it resolved before our final budget in September?
What I would prefer to do is reach out to the engineer who designed the bridge, and have the, have them give me an explanation as to what standards they used to design it, and why they felt it was safe.
I say this with all due respect, take it, young man, and run with it, you know what you need to do.
I do have a question about that, and I agree with you, take it and run, we need it checked out, but like you said, designs, design specs change, what is our liability to keep up with it, just like building codes change? We don't have to bring this up to the current building codes today.
I will ask that question as well, we have not made any significant modifications to that bridge.
That's what I mean.
And they are inspected every other year by FDOT personnel.
Thank you, Matt, Carl?
Mr. Mayor, so what does the council wish to do about the budget with regards to this issue? We obviously have to get additional information, we will do that. Do you wanna put a placeholder number in here, or would you rather wait, get the information back, and then come up with a number that?
I think that was the consensus, thanks for clarifying that, but perhaps not.
I would say just take it all the way out, and if we need it, we can pull it out of reserve, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, it's not two point five million, it's twenty-five thousand dollars.
You always have the authority, as long as you have enough money, and we're not gonna bring something to you when you don't, but you've got the authority to change that budget anytime during the year in order to, to add things like this if you need to.
Is that fine?
I agree with Greg. I agree with Greg.
Ditto?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, Fred, I, not that I'm gonna keep like a stopwatch here, I did four items, you've covered four items. We're gonna, we're gonna do a double back, but we're gonna move on to Mike now for the drill down. Mikey?
Well, I guess right now the only thing I have is, and of course Nicole had to leave, but Kentucky Park is getting overgrown again, and, you know, we put minimal amount just to kinda do basic maintenance, but if.
Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is, where is it, what page, or what?
Well, I don't know which page Kentucky Park's on.
Okay.
I think we have like a thousand dollars in there for the minimal maintenance that we do now, but a few years back, we'd gone through and really cleaned it out, but it's kinda overgrown again, and so Nicole had said to get back to that point, we'd be looking more at like five thousand dollars instead of the one thousand dollars for the minimal maintenance, so that's what I was asking to do there. The main concern in the community is that it's so overgrown, people could be living in there, hiding in there, and if we clean it out again, it kinda opens it up so you can see in better.
Can I ask a question about parks, which is, for some reason, parks gets in this budget built out over what seems like forty pages, every park, every item, whereas other initiatives like Matt's are, you know, more contained, so there's elbow room in there. And I'm just wondering if there's just elbow room in the two million dollars a park to deal with, what'd you say, five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
You know, if it had been presented in a different way, we wouldn't have every park, every nook and cranny, I'm not criticizing, I'm just comparing.
Each one's considered a separate cost center.
Yes, I'm saying.
Right.
So, but the whole budget is two million dollars in parks.
Right.
So I don't think we'd be talking to Matt, I wanna add five thousand dollars for, you know, an extra five feet of sidewalk somewhere, it's in the budget, that's my point. Is there flexibility in that park budget?
Well, understood, except that, after going through the process we did with regards to try to find the savings council was looking for, we went through every single line item and took it down to the bare bones. So I understand that looking at a two, two million dollar number
Right.
across a number of, of cost centers, might seem like five thousand is nothing, nothing. I can't guarantee that that will actually be there. Okay, given, given the evaluation we had.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Drumma?
Aye.
Councilman Dewitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakto?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Mike?
Well, then my only other concern was to the urban design thing that we're doing. We've, we've moved a lot of things out of line items to a, you know, just like a bigger fund that could be moved around, but like when things are line items, we kinda keep better track of them, we, you know, we see if it got done or didn't get done. And that's just my only concern there, so I think it was mentioned that maybe we keep a list of, like, the projects that we're trying to do, just so we don't lose sight of things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or we could, I'm sorry, or we could list them and just say, there's flexibility among the different categories.
Yeah, well, we always have flexibility moving things around, it's just, it's just easier to keep track, an eye on things if it's listed out.
I was confused when I was, I said, I don't know, I lost track of what we were doing. May I have my items, or?
I'm gonna keep moving down the line here, Peter, four items or less?
Oh, but he had, he gave me three.
He had seven.
He deferred three to Pete. How much did it cost you, what do you want?
I have reductions.
Sugar's low.
I have reductions, you should start down.
Let her go, go ahead.
You can all be adding stuff.
Peter is deferring to you.
I'm reducing.
Hold on, let's add everything first, and you can reduce.
That's where we're sitting on the end sometimes, it's not good, see?
I have a big one, and I, I have a big one, and I know we'll get a lot of pushback this, but I think we should this, but I think we should remove the skate park from...
Page and line number, please.
Page number fifty-six. And because Nicole had mentioned that at this price that we had put in there, we're gonna get, I don't know the statistics, but a fairly small, very small skate park, which I don't think will really be effective for the people, the students or the people that come there. So I think it's a waste of money personally.
Well, I just happen to have the occasion to reread the minutes because I was looking for what I wanted to give Debbie. And what we said at the last meeting was that we weren't necessarily going to go forward with it because of exactly what you're saying.
And the use...
But I thought the minutes were right. We said at the time, we were gonna ask staff to come back and kind of give us a read on it. Is that...
Right, that's accurate.
Yeah, because the usage at the time, in the old one, which was like four or five times the size of this one, I don't know what the relative size is, we were getting very low usage anyway. And if we have it much smaller, even though it's a, you know, it's not even a fancy one, it's just a concrete one versus a wood one, I think the usage will be even less.
You've got, you've got twenty thousand square feet there. You're looking at, at best, five thousand square feet under new ones.
So I think that's not a good project.
And I'm gonna jump in and disagree. We have very little for children and kids to do in our city. And Amy, I love you, you know I do, but I just, to cut it, to slash something further for our children, I mean, I know we're an elderly community, I get that. But what, what do we have for the children?
Well, I propose, even if you don't want to slash, put in a hundred thousand and do a project that they could really use. We don't have that many children that are using this. That's the whole point.
And, but to that point, though, the one that we currently have, it is more restrictive. You have to go inside. The kids, they don't want to be supervised. They would much rather have something that they can go and use.
It's still gonna be at the rec...
And so, I mean, as it is right now, almost any day or any afternoon, you can go down to Riverside Park and see all the kids that are skateboarding up on the benchel and all around there, around the cottages, up and down the stairs. That's the kind of stuff they like, you know, and it's not supervised. So I mean, and that was one of the reasons I wasn't really happy that it was still gonna be at the rec center was because of that appearance of supervision. The kids would rather it be somewhere that they can go do their own thing.
Can we, for the budget, pick a number? Or you don't want to know it?
No, I'm just saying that I don't think the project is gonna work the way we think. And if we're gonna spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, let's pick something that is really something that young, whatever age group we're focusing in on this...
Page eight, line fifty-six.
Well, it's...
I mean, they're building a big skate park in Naples, aren't they? I mean, it's gonna be, so they're not gonna, I mean, the kids are gonna go down there. They're not gonna come here, even though, you know...
They can get be driven down there. I mean, most of your skateboard kids, they're skating in their area, their home turf, so...
Can we leave it in and just see what staff comes back with? It sounds like, obviously, the issue would be an awful lot more money to do something significant.
Right.
And we'll just make the, but rather than take it out, just leave it there and see what happens.
Yeah, that's what I...
We've already kind of agreed, we're not building, I think we have agreed, we're not building the tiny one.
Well, it is. That's the problem. We had, we had, we had agreed to this at a time when we thought we were gonna replicate the one that we had.
Exactly.
And then Nicole came back a couple of meetings ago and said, no, it's not gonna be twenty thousand square feet, it's gonna be five thousand square feet.
But what about this just as a placeholder for what we previously decided to put in and see what they come back with and see if it makes any sense? Odds are, it'd be difficult for them to pull a rabbit out of a hat, but let's just leave it and see.
Well, you think they could do it for...
I don't know. That's what they haven't, they haven't had a chance to look at it.
And it may be something that could be added to. You know, we could do a smaller one and then as you see that, hey, it is getting used, we can add on to it to make it bigger.
And that is a very good point. And that is that this would be designed and it would be located within that twenty thousand square feet to allow for expansion.
Isn't this funded with park impact fees?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
Well, then, even if we didn't spend this, we can't divert it over to some other things, I think.
Amy, what would you like your motion to be on this?
Well, I don't think we should do it at all. I think we should just pull it unless we want, what I'd rather do is put in a certain amount of money, even if you use the same amount, but have the staff come back with a project that is suitable for children of a certain age that we're trying to address. Because I, you know, I'm not against providing activities for children. I just don't think it's gonna be money well spent. But the idea that it could be expanded is a good one. So we're looking at a project that might be one seventy-five now and if we double it, it'll be, you know, this is gonna be a five hundred thousand dollar event here or a project for a child. And is that the best way to address the needs of school-aged children?
Sure.
I don't, I don't think it is, but...
Maybe not.
You know, I haven't done the study myself. Something that Nicole and the staff should, I think, look at it to say, we have a goal of addressing children's activities. Let's find a good use of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Or really, what in the long run will, because I still totally disagree that that'll be effective at that size. We're looking at a three hundred thousand or a four hundred thousand dollar project over time. What can we do that would be better use of our money for that? That's...
So Amy, and I hate, we're doing it for budgeting purposes. What is your motion on this?
Let's put in a hundred thousand dollars and get some kind of guidance from staff.
Okay. There's been a motion for a hundred thousand, Ann?
If I could just clarify, that's actually in the current year budget and that's a, oh, it's a carryover.
That will be a carryover. Okay. Well, then we could use it for something else.
Well, and I guess my point, or my thought on this is, is that...
Yeah, it's carryover. I'm sorry. I wasn't even...
Where I have a little heartburn on this is, I'm with Mike. I mean, we can always expand on it. And I hate to put it this way, but only because I guess I don't do it. And I used to skateboard and I used to ride a bike and I would love to have one of these as a kid. Well, BMX bikes that would do something in this. And my issue is that, you know what, we gave the Y a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build a pickleball court that's not even ours. And now, if I want to go play on it, I gotta either pay four bucks and go to the Y and join the Y and do all this. This is something for the youth of our kids so they're not out vandalizing stuff. And, I mean, it's a small pennant to pay the one seventy-five, especially if some of it's coming from, you know, impact fees or even a CBG block grant, whatever we can get it from. It may not come out of general fund. And if we've got to continue to expand on it, I mean, we've got twenty-one parks. We didn't have twenty-one parks when we started. We kept expanding and buying things and doing this. I just think it is a good use of money for down the road. Like I said, and I, and I brought it up when we did the one fifty for the, for the Y. I mean, I heard everybody here, hey, pickleball's new rage. Oh, it's great. I'll never use it that I know of. In the near future, I won't.
And just one clarification, they're not vandalizing anything.
No, they're not, but I'm saying...
They're great, they're being respectful.
No, no, I'm not, I'm saying kids in general, if they're left to idle hands.
But if they have somewhere else to go...
And you don't have to join the Y to play pickleball, another clarification.
Well, you don't have to. You gotta pay four bucks every time, but if you join the Y, it's a lot cheaper or free. That's what I'm saying.
You didn't say that part.
That's what I said. I pulled away from the mic and said that.
So, and I'm sorry, I'm not picking on you, Amy. I don't mean it that way.
Just roll me down.
No, 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 no. She, she is bringing, no, because it hasn't been seconded yet. This is a carryover.
That's correct.
Should we be drilling down on carryovers?
It's not, you don't need to at this time, but certainly if you choose to, you can.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
What's the motion?
The motion was for a hundred thousand dollars.
Carry forward to a hundred thousand.
Is there a second? Going? Gone. Sorry, Amy. Next item.
Waste your money. Oh, I have another one. I just have a question. I think we said that we might try to reduce the council budget. I didn't see that we reduced the council budget at all, did we?
Yeah.
How did we reduce it?
Ann can give you the details on that, just to make sure you're clear. There were certain things we just did not feel comfortable with staff to touch. So there's, you know, you may not even agree with some of the cuts that we proposed. So I'm glad this was actually raised because I think council needs, it's your budget, especially that portion of it, and we need you to make sure you're comfortable with that. So Ann...
Can I ask if I could cover that as one of my four?
Sure, however you want to do it.
Sure. And like I said, we're not limited to four. I'm just trying to get everybody in the conversation and then we'll double and triple back.
It's gonna be a short meeting.
Yeah, short meeting. No, that was a city council meeting, it was gonna be short.
I bet, Ben, we were out by seven thirty.
So Amy, you still have three more because O'Flynn stole that one back.
I think that's all I have. I might have to come back because I don't know.
Okay.
No one likes my ideas, so...
All right, Greg?
My only biggest thing is, like I've always said, is two things, just to make sure our infrastructure's shored up, whether it's the vehicle or whatever. And the other one is special events committee. I think we draw a lot of people down here for the special events. To cut it, I'm not comfortable with. I respect and I wholeheartedly agree with your concept of partnerships. My only concern, I have two concerns with it. One, depending on the amount of the partnership, could change the message and/or the feel of the event, of it not being a city event anymore. It's, you know, and I, and I use this as, since, let's use the builder of the high school or let's say, the only one I've seen out there is a big Crowder Roofing. Let's say Crowder Roofing wants to buy into our Fourth of July, but they want equal billing. That then in turn takes it away from a city felt event. Now it's...
Just the one item.
It's, it's not that. So that's my concern with that. I would like to keep the special events budget relatively the same. And, you know, I think Laura and the special events committee go out and solicit these type of partnerships. And if we get it, we can always save money and carry it forward. I just think that that's a...
No, and I appreciate those comments, Greg. And I will just add that we all, when we say city events, and I get that, and I'm gonna throw myself under the bus, we have people from all over that attend those events. So are those, I get it, but are those city events when we're catering to Southwest Florida? Is my only point on that.
Well, and I think...
So we should bring in the right to let, and Laura, I had a question and I'm sorry, I've lost the sheet, but I'm on page four here, I'm looking at it. Oh, it's on twenty-four on that. Yeah, on the further breakdown. And Greg, I don't want to get off on a, because obviously I brought this up. When you say, ch-ch-ch-ch-ch, no, it was something else Laura sent. Maybe it was, it was the email. That's why I'm not seeing that. I'm sorry, Pete. When you say in-kind, and I think that's the term you use to describe, that means donated, that means donations and that means non, I mean, I know what in-kind means, I get that, but those are donated services. Could you break that out a little bit? Because what I'm driving at is I still think the direction of this, I know the direction that I would like to see it go, is to allocate X from the city budget for these great events. But I'd also like to see private investment in these events.
Sure. What I tried to do after hearing some of your discussions was to make sure that when we were breaking down each event, we were showing you cash donations, so monetary sponsorships. So that's the one item that you saw in the email that I responded to you. And the other are in-kind. Now, in-kind could be for a veterans event, for example, the American Legion will book someone to sing the National Anthem, to do multiple performances. Obviously, those people would charge normally to come and perform at an event. Or we will, we will purchase, let's say for Celebrate Benita, a advertising package. The city may pay fifteen hundred dollars. Rend a broadcast value to us, maybe fifteen thousand in turn. Another one would be Media Vista. You know, this last Fourth of July, we worked, tried to reach out to them, we worked with them, we spent, I think, two fifty. And in turn, they gave us a larger value for our dollars. So does that make sense? Is that answering your question?
Yeah, no, and I guess my point is, in the course of six weeks, we raised twenty-five thousand dollars and it was all private. What I'm driving at is when we look at Celebrate Benita, seventy-six thousand dollars, cash donations, fifty-five hundred. And I'm not picking on that event on that year. My larger point is, we are not reaching out to the community for donations for these events. Fifty-five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, one thousand, that is not, in my mind, a reach out or not a very effective reach out. Why aren't we reaching out? Because we know seventy-six thousand dollars is gonna come from the taxpayers. I'm looking for a hybrid.
Okay, that's really a discussion amongst council. I can tell you what we do to reach out and I can give you a little detail on that. We do do sponsorship packages, which I did send to you, and we do send those out to the chamber. We ask the committee members to also include that information. We don't see a large monetary donation given to us other than our veterans events for keynote speakers. We have one very generous donor. The money does not come through the city and you'll see that listed in the list I sent you. Keynote speakers, well-known keynote speakers for veterans events can be fifteen thousand dollars per event. So we do have a very generous donor who will go, that's included as an in-kind donation because it doesn't come in as money. It goes to the organization that sends us the keynote speakers and we handle it that way. So it is, it's really up to you to let us know what you'd like to see. Do we reach out for sponsors? Certainly. Does the committee reach out for sponsors? Yes.
Laura, can, I was just gonna say, can I ask, who does the reach out?
Now, staff does send out packages and letters, but a lot of our in-kind sponsors come through our committee members. So for example, Adam helps out with Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Bob Gillette, not to name too many people, but they will put together the programs and reach out to make sure that we have people to perform for us and let us know who those people will be. So it's definitely a joint partnership, I would say.
Well, and I would just say, with, with me drilling down on you, right, I guess, and being a pain in the neck and you getting the word to the various committees, with, right off the bat, they reduced what they said they needed, right? What if there was a combination then to say, okay, we'll cut X, whatever it is, and reach out? I mean, so they'll say, okay, all right, we're gonna cut it by ten thousand. So we know we have to go raise ten thousand from the public, private sector. I'm not looking to recreate that formula. There's no need to go out and make an aggressive ask for private donations because they know they're gonna get eighty thousand bucks for that event. So where's, where's, there is no pressure. because they know they're gonna get eighty thousand bucks for that event. So, where's, where's, there is no pressure, there is no need to go out and do an aggressive ask to the private sector. And I just, where, where we're having these discussions, we're working, we're, you know, working with each other, working with different people, where there's, if there's gonna be eighty thousand dollars there in taxpayer dollars every year, there is no need, or no pressure, or no sustained effort to go out and bring in private donations, and I would like to see that change. And I may be all alone, I may be Whistling Dixie up here alone, but I just think that formula needs to be changed.
I think the need is, I think you're right, I think that we need to put that out there, but on the same token, you, I think that we should look at, you know, we're just wrapping up a project that's, that really showcases Old Forty-One. And now to start cutting those events that go down there, it's, it's gonna, I mean, the secondary, the secondary dollars we get from people coming down there, I think is great. And I think that it, you, they see it twofold. And Laura told you, or Kathy kinda said, you know what, let's even use Celebrate Benita. Now, instead of a top-tier guy, we're getting a second-tier guy. We're gonna get a, a has-been, or a never-will-be to sh- to sing it, you know, Celebrate Benita, instead of a top line. That is gonna affect who comes down there, and you're right. It's not just the people in Benita Springs. You know, we've had people come in here and tell us at the Fourth of July Parade that they come from Naples to see the, the fireworks. And I'm looking at the ancillary thing, and you and I were both there after the Celebrate Benita at a local establishment later on. Those businesses downtown see that influx before and after the event. So, those dollars, I think, are well-spent on, if you wanna call it, economic development. I mean, I, I think that, you know, we can make cuts, and I agree with it a hundred percent. But the day that we can't get those private donors, it's gonna affect the feel of that. And how long is it gonna take to get those people to come back to say, hmm, it wasn't very good these last two years, they didn't get anything good. We're gonna go at, to somewhere else this year for whatever it may be. Or I'm just not gonna make it a point to go down there for these events anymore, because they're, eh, they're okay.
There's a lot of great people involved in these events, that is not even a question. But the great people involved in these events are not reaching out to the community effectively, because they know they don't need to. The taxpayers are flipping the bill, so there's no pressure, there's no need to reach out for private donations. And I would just like, long-term, here we go, we're talking about things that, with illegal bills, okay, it's only been X so far, but unless we set a precedent, or try to change that formula, there is no system. I would like to see this changed. And I'm not saying, I don't know if it's seventy-five percent, let's just say, go out and raise the other twenty-five percent. I know they can do it.
I, I don't
I know they can do it.
I, I, so this is not a budget matter, this is, it's a budget matter, but you're, but you, well, yeah, but what you're suggesting is change the folk, in other words, process-wise, do something different going forward.
Right, and, you know, and I guess if we need to drill down on the number, that would be page four, item seventeen, right, Laura? Is that right?
Yes.
Fifty-one thousand, one fifty, that's what they agreed to reduce by? See, so, so right off the bat, implicit, and that's wonderful, but right off the bat, implicit in what they said, all right, so we'll go get a second-tier person, what about going out and raise a little bit more to get the top tier?
And, and I do wanna, there was a discussion had, and of course, they will continue to, I, I, it's hard for me, I don't wanna speak for the committee too much here. But, but what I can tell you is, when they looked at these reductions, it wasn't that absolutely these things aren't gonna ever happen again. They will work to get sponsorships, but they can't guarantee sponsorships outside of what has been done up to this point. There is extensive participation from the community in these events. Now, is it dollars given to the city? No, it is not, which you can see in the list that we provided. Is there, is there area for growth? Possibly, but there, can't guarantee that. So, it's, it's really up to council to see what you would like for the committee to pursue, and, you know, involvement as to just kinda guidance and, and what you'd like, like us to do. Cause I know for Fiesta, the event that you're referencing, y- you have a model possibly that you worked with. So, I mean, if that's something that you would like, the committees, that maybe the outreach committee and the special event committee could work together on, on, on looking at the events.
I think that would be fabulous, and it's probably a bad example, but Pavlov's dog, right, the bell rings, the dogs salivate, because that's trained behavior. The trained behavior here is just to let the taxpayers pay it and not go raise money privately, so I would like to change that model.
Yeah, but you, you keep, and I hate to harp on it.
No, that's why we're having the discussion.
And I, and I don't wanna get crappy about it, I guess is what I'm thinking. Well, it's just, we're talking about things that have been going on for sixteen years, and granted that. But we just dropped two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars on a monument, why not get private donations for that? That, that's what I'm talking, I guess, and there is plenty of goodwill. I mean, you know, there have been fences built by donations in the city at the local scho- at both local schools, at the, at the Benita Springs Elementary and the middle school, by donations raised. There is goodwill in the city, but maybe not for this. You, you may be a hundred percent right, but I'm just looking at it as, as, that's why people come to Benita Springs.
So, I mean, can I take a shot? Well, go ahead, Greg.
And I guess at the end of it all, if we're doing budget thing, I would like to put at least half of it back. Add twenty, I make a motion to put twenty-five thousand dollars back into Special Events Committee, or in the Special Events through, for all of them. Twenty-five thousand total, just to reduce it by twenty-six or whatever.
So, I mean, leaving aside what you just said, we're not, we're almost talking about a philosophy here, rather than specific money.
Well, that's
All right, leaving aside your motion, but, so we have an example with Fiesta, which really is an exemplar, right? I mean, from a standing start, I don't know when they started, a month or two before?
Six weeks, right.
Six weeks, they put on this fantastic thing without a nickel of city money. I mean, that's something to think about. Now, I'm not saying it was easy to do, I'm not saying be easy to replicate, but it sure is worth thinking about.
Well, and I, and I agree with you, cause you know what, for
And I think that's what he's saying.
That's all, and that really is all I'm saying.
And I think that, 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 you're exactly right, and I think they are getting some money donated. Maybe not to twenty thousand dollars or twenty-five, but I can give you another example, is we've been doing the parade for twenty-two years, and haven't asked the fire district, or anybody, for a nickel. It's all done based on sponsorships and everything.
The other question
And it's there.
Fantastic.
And it can be done, but you've gotta remember, we are also getting in-kind donations with media and stuff like that, or not hard dollars. And now, it's, okay, which would, I guess my question, which would we rather have? Let's use Renda Broadcasting to give us, would you rather them give us twenty, ten thousand dollars to get a top-line headliner, and then we have to pay ten thousand dollars to them to, or to whomever, to advertise for us? I, I, you know what I mean?
I just, Greg, I just know
I understand.
That when there's no need for a committee to raise money, because the taxpayers are flipping the bill, there's not gonna be a sustained effort to go out and re- raise money, cause they, they don't need to, the money's there.
A mayor, uh
And I just think that could change. I mean, I'm not saying, all right, I mean, all right, we, we could make these all, strip away all the money, and go raise it privately. That's not what I'm saying, at all. Steve?
Well, going back to your Fiesta, is that something you're gonna volunteer every year? I mean, get volunteering money for that, so?
There's a line item in here for ten thousand. I, I understand, it's a new event, it hasn't, it's not a proven event, I mean, it's got a pretty good track record, it's got one year. So, they've, there's a placeholder in here for ten thousand, I think that's fine. Is it gonna cost more than that? You bet, absolutely. And it's gonna go be raised privately. And the group will raise it, because they know they'll need to. These groups know they don't need to raise the money, it's there. And I'm, nothing against these fantastic people, fantastic events. I think the model moving forward should change. And, all right, so for a line item, Greg, you, you made a motion?
Yeah, I said to put twenty-five thousand back into it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? Amy?
I, I, I think we should let the process work out. There's been a lot of effort done here to try to moderate that line item. And why don't we just see what happens? I mean, we, it's only one year, how, you know, I think it'll be pretty positive. I think the idea that, on Fourth of July, you only have one group come in, that makes a lot of sense. So, the, a combination of restructuring some of these events, and then trying to get additional funding outside of the city, we might come up with a new model. And again, it fits in with my idea that we have to look of the long-term, I mean, headliners, esp- especially top-liners, are not gonna get any cheaper. It's gonna be an expense that comes, and, and, and increasing expense year after year. So, we, I think, over the long run, we're gonna have to make some adjustments here in process. So, I think for this year, we should leave it the way it is, see what we can do. And if we can't get anybody to come in on Celebrate Benita, then Laura can come back and say, listen, it's impossible, we can't get anybody.
I agree with that.
I agree with that, and I would just say one thing further. If, if you go to, and I'll just say, all right, let's look at Celebrate Benita for twenty-seventeen. Eighty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents came in from the taxpayers. They re- they raised a thousand dollars from private donations. What if you were to say, and I'm just throwing out a rough number here, sixty thousand dollars was paid by the taxpayers? We know that to get a top-tier performer, we need to raise thirty thousand. I'm just throwing out random numbers. What business, so, what business would not say, okay, so you've got sixty thousand, you need thirty thousand? Everybody likes incentives, they like goals, that is not a hard ask for these committee members. It's not like they're starting from zero. It's not like we need to raise eighty thousand, and people are gonna say, oh my goodness, they're never gonna get there, they're not gonna do that. We've got sixty, we need thirty. Would, would you be willing to help us? What would you be able to do to help us get to that thirty thousand dollars? That's, the ABCs are raising money, and if you look at these numbers that have been raised, I guarantee that has not been the approach.
I just think, and I suggest we have, we're in reruns. No, I, I am just gonna, my, my last and final comment is I ju- two com- well, one and a half comment. One, I think it's, I don't disagree with the cuts, I just think it's too much in one year to put on them, and it's gonna change the complexity of it. And it's almost, I think, there's the, what is the total budget? Two-something, a little over two, for the entire events? I mean, you're doing it by a quarter. You know, we're not taking a little bite here, we're taking a gigantic piece of it.
Two oh nine.
Not really.
Well, it was two fifty, then the new one's down to two oh nine.
So, that's what I mean, so two fifty, you're taking a fifth of it, right off the bat.
You're saying these committees can't raise that?
I, I, I just had other questions.
Of course they can.
Well, I, Celebrate Benita, you know, has, has been dropped down to forty-five eight. But, but I just had another question on the miscellaneous special events, what's included in that? Oh, I know, but
Miscellaneous, oh, sorry. The miscellaneous special events includes a storage fee, when the community hall was torn down, there were a lot of items that had to be stored. It also covers any ribbon cuttings. Your city cleanup, your coastal cleanup, comes out of the miscellaneous. Anything that might come up, for example, during the year, we had one year that during our downtown project, we had to incur costs for details for the sheriff's office, that were, that happened due to the downtown project. That was taken out of miscellaneous at the time.
Well, I, I only ask, cause looking at most of the numbers, these are all really city events. And, and we've, we've dropped the, the Fall Festival, River Fest out, and that it started out grassroots, it wasn't city-sponsored. So, it's kinda going back to its roots, which is good. But the, the only number that, you know, really sticks out is the Art Festival of seven thousand dollars. That's not a city event, yet the city's actually paying money for it. Anybody else that comes in, you know, the Blues Festival, all that stuff, we don't pay any money for those events.
That's part of the contract, that five-year contract, so this year, we will be looking at
It is the last year, right?
But this is the last year, yes, yes.
Can I make a suggestion? Well, we, Greg's gonna motion here.
Yeah, we've got a motion in a second, to twenty-five thousand, Greg, you said?
Yes.
Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
I just make this comment. I, I do believe, based on the attendance that we turn out for a lot of these things, that we do have some bigger corporations and all that, two of them, I'm not gonna say who they are, are fighting to who's gonna get most of the customers out of Benita. One's south and one's north. There's all kind of people that we could approach, or somebody corporately, not, but, and it may not work. And I think we should at least have the feeling, if it doesn't, and we see that they've made a real good faith effort, and we can always reconsider things. But, but I do agree, I think we could at least give it a go. And, I mean, even, I was even talking to Kathy, even though they wiped them out, I said, you know, I bet you could get a bunch of people to pay a hundred bucks apiece to get their name on all these T-shirts, and that would probably pay for most of them, or pay for the loss they were running on. So, but there's, but I think, I think it, we could pursue it. If it doesn't work, then, I agree with Greg, th- these events are great things, they're great for the town. They're a part of the community spirit building, and we need to do what we have to do to keep them going. But we could at least try, make a good faith effort to try it.
So, there's been a motion to reduce the fifty-one thousand, one fifty to twenty-five thousand. There's been a second, is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
I'm going to vote against it, but I fully support this, and I would help him out if we can't do it.
Count on Hunter's Ridge for a donation.
Right, big check.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Uh, no, I think we should pass the hat, by the way.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Saka?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman O'Flynn?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay. Greg, I think you got three more, or two more.
I'm good, that's it, my, that's my only
What happened? Did we vote it down?
Voted it down, so I'm coming to Pelican Landy.
Steve, if you don't mind, I wanna jump over to Peter, because there's somebody in the audience waiting for their items, it's, okay, I'm sorry.
I only have, I only have ten.
You only have fifteen?
Let, let me start with the one, and this is a special situation, it just came up, but you guys are general, you all are generally familiar with the situation at Fair Winds and Paradise, and how touchy that was, and I wanna pay a big compliment to Ben Hertzenson and Alene Brown, who are the head of that community association, and John Dolmire, Carl Schwing, has been involved to really getting to a fabulous conclusion to what has been a lot of agita for certain people up there, unfortunately, okay? And part of that involves, and this has just happened in the last week, part of that involves property that is the city's property along Paradise Road, and the need to put in, basically, a stormwater conveyance there. There's flooding that people across the street are concerned about, but the solution also relates to the macro solution to the issue we've been dealing with for over a year. And I, what I'd like to suggest, I, I had at least, so the, the cost of that conveyance, it's about three-hundred-and-seventy-five feet of piping and a bubbler, and it is on city property, is around thirty thousand dollars. I'd like to suggest twenty, or maybe even twenty-five, considering all the hard work that these individuals have, have put in with respect to that. So, I'd like to actually make a suggestion of twenty-five thousand with respect to that.
Okay.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion in a second?
What, what does twenty-five thousand get us, though?
Twenty-five, Matt? I'm sorry, Matt?
I mean, if the project's thirty-five thousand, it's
No, it's, it's twenty-five to thirty.
Matt Feeny, Public Works Director, for the record, this, if I understand this right, would be to, to in turn pass on to the community to affect the repair?
Correct, we're not doing it, right.
What it would get you, th- they have issues with their own internal drainage, and modifying their drainage structure, it would get you a pipe along the western edge of Paradise Road, from the entrance to Fair Winds property, south to the end of their property line, which would convey their water, as well as the city's water that's been kinda stacked up north of that entrance, in the right-of-way in heavy rains.
So, so in response to your question, councilmember, basically, we would be a contributor to the project, but it would be managed by the community, and they would make up the difference in some manner.
All right, I, I just wanted to make sure it was gonna get done, cause if it's
Sure.
Thirty, thirty-five, why only put twenty-five to it?
No, I just, no, the request was for twenty-five.
Okay.
So, I'd make a motion to that effect.
Second. Has been a motion in a second, is there further discussion?
I just have a question. The developer doesn't participate at all?
There's various things going on here.
Okay, all right.
Then my other question, we're not gonna dump it on someone else's property, right? It's gonna go to where it needs to go?
What am I, an engineer?
Matt, what do you got?
Their water already is dumped onto our property, and, and that's where, where this is.
Okay.
And it already conveys, there, there's just a bottleneck in their frontage along our right-of-way.
All right, and that's gonna fix this bottleneck, okay?
We allow it to flow the, the way it normally should flow.
South Winds, over to the country club, then over to Divot Drive, then over to, to my house, cause I don't have a wall.
I, I wanna be, I wanna be clear.
There's money in there for that too, by the way, now.
Oh, is your Jersey barrier getting next to it?
I wanna be clear, it, we'll go into our, our normal drainage system, and it does do things like what you're talking about, but it is our drainage.
So, I'm gonna create another problem, is the question.
Has been a motion in a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Saka?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons? Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, for clarification, for this twenty-five thousand dollar vote you just took, is that for this current fiscal year, or the next one?
I would suggest whatever's needed. No, this is, this may be going forward. Whatever is, I would put, if it's possible, the flexibility in that.
Okay.
So, they can move on this as promptly as they
If they wanna move on it this year, great, if not, carry it forward as designated.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, what's next? All right. I don't have my city council sheet here, so I'm not gonna work up my notes. But whatever the reduction in the city council, get to Amy's question, all right. And you know what page it is in the small sheets?
Um, yes, it's on pages four and five.
Four and five, that's right.
Four and five.
Alene and I were going over yesterday, it's four and five in both. So, the, the reduction there, I have kind of a informational point, and then I have a proposal. The, the reduction there is fifty-nine thousand dollars, and the question is, where's the other money? And the answer is that, and Alene did send around a, an email yesterday, if you got it, at nine o'clock in, or maybe it was today, at nine o'clock in the morning, which laid out for downtown economic development, and for economic development, various projects that are already, in, pardon the pun, in the pipeline, all right? So, if you have that sheet, it's Caris, Frieden Hall, DeFrancesco, Bull, Harris, Camuto Group, Special Coatings, Herc, and Herc. And as to those, we're committed to those, those are pre-existing commitments, all right? So, and with proper accounting, so to speak, has them showing here. But to me, the more relevant fact is, I would almost, she's gotta do what she's gotta do for accounting purposes, but that's, that's just a statement that we're, we have to pay that, and maybe this year, it may be next year, she needs to put it in the budget, because we're committed to pay it. But there is no more money in there. And so, that'll set a base for next year, which is, I believe where we were, I hope we were at the last meeting, which is, look, if General Motors comes to Florida and wants to move from Detroit, we'll obviously figure out a way to put money up. But we're not putting new money in the budget for that, that would come out of a special allocation. So, it's a long way of saying, there is more savings here than meets the eye. Because of the nature of operating expenses, you've gotta carry those expenses forward each year, as opposed to capital expenses. My second point is, so I'm happy with that, because in my mind, I'm adding those numbers up for savings. The second thing is, on the EDC, staff has suggested, it's not on these sheets, but it's in what Alene sent around yesterday. Staff has suggested for the EDC, ten thousand dollars, I'd like to stay with twenty-five thousand, and the reason is that Staff has suggested for the EDC, ten thousand dollars. I'd like to stay with twenty-five thousand, and the reason is that I think the management that we have of the EDC now is extremely professional. I'm not knocking what used to be on there before, but, uh, let me put it in a positive way. This is not a politicized organization in any way. They're working hard for true economic development, and to me, um, I, considering that, I'd like to continue to have the twenty-five, so I'd make a motion to that effect. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Saka? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
And the next thing quickly is, and I mentioned this at a workshop that we had, I believe, not for staff, but for city council, who, members who have health insurance, that the city council member should make a fifteen percent contribution toward the premium. It's something that's customary in business. I mean, I don't know of a, a non-municipal government in the country that doesn't have contributions made like that. Um, and I think, considering what staff has done, and, um, I'd like to suggest that the city council members who participate kick in fifteen percent of the premiums on their health insurance. So I'd make a no, a motion on that.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, second? Discussion?
Uh, yes, my question is, what do we do with the employees? What are the employees?
I wouldn't touch that.
No, 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 I'm saying, I think whatever the employees have to pay, that's what we should have to pay. If the employees aren't paying anything.
They're not.
Then I don't think we should. That, that's, that's what my question is. I don't want to put, I don't want to pass it on to the employees whatsoever. Okay, no, I'm not saying you are.
Oh, oh, no, no. So, so. At a high level, the individual employees pay nothing towards the premium.
Correct.
Okay? Unless there's family involved in the coverage.
Okay.
And the hun, and the, and the employees pay one-hundred percent of the premium for any spouse, children, full family. All right, so their portion is free.
Gotcha.
Anything with families, a hundred percent out of the employee's pocket.
All right, what, what happens with city council? Because I'm not a participant in, so I don't know. City council is paid, uh, they, they don't pay.
They.
But for spouse, I assume they do. I don't know.
Yeah, don't we know this answer? We know this answer, right?
Seventy dollars a month, or seventy dollars a month.
For the spouse.
Spouse or family.
Spouse and.
Seventy a month for the entire thing.
So nine-hundred a year, or?
Yeah, but I don't think that's fair, that we get a better benefit than the employees. Is, is, I think that's what Peter's asking.
I wasn't even aware of that fact.
Okay.
Uh, but, I, but I.
Well, yeah, they pay a hundred percent.
But isn't that a hundred percent? No?
No. Um, generally, I looked at the numbers recently because staff is being told to do a policy, and I was going to bring up if Councilmember Forbes didn't, uh, some staff members take advantage that the city has a payment in, in lieu of receiving insurance, if they receive that, and to have the same similarity for council, to have that aspect. So, the benefit, and, and the numbers came from when they set up the one for council. It was set up as a separate class, and it was set up based on what were the fees at the time at Lee County for everyone. And then they changed council to a special class, and then employees always took the hit for the full amount. Except for, of course, their own personal.
So Greg, um, my view is, Estero has no benefits for their council.
Correct.
Uh, Naples is fifteen percent. Actually, they're for everybody, but I'm not talking about staff. So I don't think this is anything to ask for, much to ask for, for council.
I don't think it's much to ask for. I just think that.
The council will contribute.
Well, I know, I, I, I don't disagree with that at all. I just, I guess I'm looking for equality. If the employees are not paying anything.
Right.
Then, then if you have single coverage, then you shouldn't pay anything. But if it's you and your spouse, and the employee's spouse or family is paying X, that's what we should pay if you have your spouse or family on it.
I, I think I can see where, why don't we just have a roll call, if I might?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
On, we have a motion and a second on the fifteen percent.
And then let me just ask Anne, not to make you, put you on the spot, but the seventy dollars a month is seven-hundred, eight, eight-hundred-and-forty dollars a year. What would that equate to roughly as a percentage? That, that council members are already paying. Peter's proposing fifteen. We're, we're just finding out that they already pay seventy dollars a month.
No.
What does that equate to for a percentage?
The council member, the council.
Council does already pay.
If they have other than individual coverage.
Right, so I'm, I'm just talking about individual coverage, and individual courage, coverage, council pays nothing. Is that correct, Anne? On individual coverage, ca, council pays nothing.
That's correct.
Right, so my motion was fifteen percent. This other thing, I would.
Individual coverage.
Correct. This other thing, I, I'm just, this is what my proposal is. If somebody else wants to make another motion, it's fine.
So, but, but to be clear, that's not equality. And Fred, you had a comment?
Well, no, the only, only thing I found out from Alene, Alene can explain it better, they did reduce some kind of the, something on the insurance for the employees issue.
Oh, so to clarify, so when, when Anne started her budget discussion this morning and introduced the, the larger items, that was the fact that we reduced to the fifteen percent as opposed to the twenty percent in, in the budget, and we also started at the beginning of the contract year. And additionally, we looked at the HSA account, which can fluctuate depending on what those insurance rates come in.
Right. It isn't, actually, they don't have as good a deal on what their coverage is either, do they?
Well, we, we won't know that till we go out to the bid process, and so we're anticipating that there, there is a possibility that there could be a higher premium in that case scenario, but we won't know that till we get through the process.
So seeing how we're doing the drill down, what is this fifteen percent going to equate to for a line item on the budget, if it passes?
Fifteen percent of?
If it's, um.
What's the total, Anne, there?
If you're talking about fa, family coverage.
No, no, I don't, fifteen percent of, my, my motion is fifteen percent of individual coverage. Oh, so you can't tell.
We need a number, because that's what we're doing.
And remember, insurance changes.
Well, we're, we're wall parking it.
You want to hold that for now, Pete, so they can come back for a number? Because we need a number.
Yes.
Otherwise.
Are you talking about the actual cost?
The premium, the premium.
The actual premium that the city pays.
Correct.
Right.
Individual coverage.
That's all I'm talking about.
It'll be a lot.
Eighteen percent of that.
It'll, it'll be a lot more than seventy dollars, because I can't.
No, no, seventy is a different, we're getting, seventy's nothing to do with it.
Seventy is for families.
Seventy's got nothing to do with it.
It's a lot more than that.
It's going to be about sixty-five to seventy dollars. I think individual coverage is going to be.
It's, it's more like twelve, twelve thousand a year.
For the whole.
No.
Group.
Individual coverage?
It's unbelievable. We'll figure it out.
Well, I know what the district ours.
Pete, let's move on to your next item.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
They're figuring out the number.
All right, good, all right, fine. All right, the next item is really just a, a small point, but it's. We're, we're going on to the next item while they're adding it.
What are you saying?
Which is, um, Nick, this is not a suggestion for an addition, it's just a reallocation, and I'll explain. Nick Beadles and I met with John Yarborough, uh, for whom the Yarborough Trail is named. He was at Lee County Parks Commissioner for decades yesterday about the Sun Trail, or what we're calling Benita Estero Trail. And John, for various reasons, made a recommendation that we each put fifty thousand dollars in our budget for that, so, CIP. So I'd like to do that and take it out of whatever we have for bikes, for, for bike CIP. He just. So you're just moving it? Yeah, just moving it. It's not, yeah.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the fifty thousand for the trail? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Saka?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm going to move along, Steve. You've been waiting patiently.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, page six, uh, the twenty-five hundred dollars for the Woden Warrior softball game. There is quite a bit of the media stuff that we pay for and, and all the other, you know, latrines and so on and so forth. So what I'm requesting is that every year, this be a line item budget for, starting in eighteen, eighteen to nineteen, because on my way in, Deputy Mayor O'Flynn, in honor of his father, is going to give us twenty-five hundred dollars for this year. So, thank you very, very much. And the other thing is, uh, the BBIA, I have not heard anything, and maybe I should have listened to you, Rick, at the beginning when they said, you said, they don't need any money, but, uh, so I want that thirteen thousand to be turned back to the city. I'll take the heat for it.
And for clarification on that, that's something that's budgeted in the, um, two thousand and seventeen budget, so that's not in the FY eighteen budget.
It's a carryover.
We're not going to carry it over.
Okay, right.
Do we need a vote on that, Steve?
Well, need to vote on the twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, all right, so let's, let's, uh, vote on the twenty-five hundred. There's been a motion. I'll second it. Further discussion? Roll call, please. Greg?
I just had a question. For next year's budgets, why are we voting on it this year? Are we voting to take it out?
No, no, he's donating twenty-five hundred dollars.
For this year.
For this year.
Right.
For this, for the seventeen, eighteen.
Right, you donate.
For the coming year.
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen is when we start the line item.
Gotcha. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Saka?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
And thank you again.
And then for the BBIA?
BBIA thirteen thousand is going back, we, we are giving it back to the city.
Okay.
If, if council could take a vote on that.
Yeah, I was going to say, so there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Saka?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Great. Steve?
I'm done.
You're done. Greg?
I, I just have, I kind of piggybacking on what, uh, Councilman O'Flynn. I just had a question about, or I guess bringing it up, operation under ours again, on that page four, where it talks about books, publications, and membership. If I'm reading this correctly, we're at twenty-eight thousand. Is it really that much for all of us?
Oh, what line is it, Greg?
It's, uh, fifty, it's, uh, what is it? Fifty-four hundred. Page four, next, next to the last one. It's not on that big one, I'm sorry. It's on the small one.
You know what, Al, Al, Alene has it, I think, but, Anne, yeah, I, I think a lot of that is, um, memberships. I think.
I mean, how many members?
Well, MPO, well, good, good question.
Regional planning.
Oh, is it part of regional planning, or?
It is membership. A lot of it is in the.
So it's not individual membership, it's more of a city membership?
Uh, the Regional Planning Council, MPO, Southwest Florida, Florida League of Cities, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, uh, the Florida League of Mayors, and the Florida League of Cities are all included in that, um, membership, books, publications, and membership. And then it's broken down in the, in the back of the parent budget book.
Right.
Um, by each of those items.
Okay. And then my other question was, it kind of pertains to, I think, what Councilman Forbes brought up. The health savings account, the thirteen thousand dollars for that. What is that in there? I didn't think we were allowed to have the HSA as city council. Or are you researching it?
I had done research. I provided a memorandum to staff. We do need to create a policy where it would be a taxable payment in lieu. And so there should be some money, and I believe twenty-six hundred or twenty-two hundred was what, or, um, not to exceed a certain dollar threshold based on whatever the employees are receiving as an HSA in their mirror policy. And this is very similar to the first topic you had tonight, on the vehicle replacement. Uh, we do not have a policy yet. We need to formulate the policy, and by having monies placed in the agenda, we'll have it available to be applied for this year, this fiscal year.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Greg, you're good. Amy? Fred?
No, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, well, I want to make sure two things. One, that we understand that this, I call it Vision Two study. It will, it'll probably be done.
We didn't talk about it.
We're talking about Benita Beach Road.
You didn't present that.
No, I didn't present it.
Oh, now you're doing it.
That's what I'm doing, yeah. You asked me if I had another item I thought. And I don't care whether it's in the budget or not. Everybody needs to know that it'll probably wind up long before the next fiscal year comes in. And if we're going to keep this thing going, we need to understand, we may need to throw another hundred grand or so in to cover additional tasks till the next fiscal year comes in. And, and I think the, one of the things we want to do, and we're not going to do it here, but we need to really be looking at, when we come up with things we're doing on Beach Road and all this stuff, what are we doing, and are we doing something in the area where we're going to really increase ad valorem significantly, or only take an area that's kind of a low real estate value anyway, and just get five percent of that instead of five percent of bigger stuff? But that's, that's for another discussion. Anyway, the only other thing I had was, I want to make sure we all understand that we get those bids in on Spring Creek restoration. It could be a little higher, and we can obviously add money to it, so that's it.
Okay.
I'm done.
Done. Mikey?
Excuse me just a minute. So, when we talk about Vision Two, the proposal is a hundred thousand dollars?
No, 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 I just, I, I said, we could either put a hundred in as a placeholder, or we can just assume we can always transfer money, whatever the pleasure of council is.
Very good, thank you.
Mike?
Um, as far as the budget goes, I'm, I'm good. Probably have some comments on the healthcare thing when we get back to talking about that, but.
Okay.
Peter?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but she's ready with the figures, I believe.
The winner is?
Well, I want to clarify, you're, you're talking about in total how much we'd come back if, if council were to pay fifteen percent of their costs.
Of the individual, for individuals, correct.
Or, or if, if they have family.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm, just individuals.
Just the individual employee.
We'll get back to it, Pete.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Anne.
I'd like to talk about Lee Tran Bus, or Carl, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, so when we started tonight, we talked about.
Carl, I'm sorry, I want, what page, Pete, in line item?
Uh, we're on, um.
Hundred fifty thousand, I think.
I saw it, but I, after a while, you just don't see anything. After a while, you just don't see it anymore.
You get no credit for that. It's on page five, and it's, uh, line thirty-four, thirty-one.
So if you will take a look, um, at thirty-four, thirty-one, thirty-four, seventy, and thirty-four, ninety-six, those are the ones, as you can see, that we're reducing the general fund by those amounts, one-fifty, seventy-eight, and seventeen. But gas tax is paying for them instead. So we've relieved the general fund of some money, all right? But gas tax, again, what you can use for other things, more towards your current transportation priorities, by using gas tax. So the bottom line is, is how do you not use the gas tax? I've already indicated that we think we probably have a hundred thousand or so of savings yet to come. Um, and, but for this budget, okay? So that leaves about a hundred and fifty or so, um, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that if you could save that number, then you don't have to use gas tax at all, okay? Those are all going to be legitimate reductions in expenditures in the general fund. In order to accomplish that, the, really, the big nut you've got left to crack is whether or not you want to continue to fund Lee Tran, okay? Which is a subsidy of that route, all right? Now, you can just say, you know what, we're just not going to pay it anymore. We do know, not know what the county's reaction to that would be, but I will go back and revisit the beginning of this fiscal year when we took a cut of about fifty thousand.
Right, right.
And the county said, well, we can help you get there, but understand, we're going to save money, too, and we do it by reducing service. Now, there were certain routes where, where the people who were actually using the route, there was, at that time, to save money too, and we do it by reducing service." Now, there were certain routes where, where the people who were actually using the route there was, at that time, just were not that many people, and so those cuts were made, and those savings were, for the most part, pretty much realized. If you say you're going to cut a hundred and fifty thousand, and you're not going to provide any subsidy for this route, I'm not sure what the count, or what the county's reaction would be, but I do know that there's certainly philosophies, you know, people who believe that we certainly spend, we certainly, the residents of Benita Springs, pay a lot of money to the county, millions and millions every year, and the question is whether or not we should even worry about that. So, I'm not sure if they're going to say, "We'll go ahead and take it on the chin, and you can go ahead and reduce it by a hundred and fifty, and we'll continue the service." They could say that, they may say, "We're going to cut the service," but we don't know to what extent, but obviously philosophically, they are not aligned with the thought that Benita gives a lot of money, therefore, we should be able to eat at least this on transportation. But, it is primarily the county's responsibility for regional transit, so.
And there's another thing Carl and I chatted about today, which is that, we have to go look, but I, I'm virtually certain that we're basically alone, maybe with one exception, in, among all the municipalities in Lee County, in shipping in for county bus service. So, I mean, that's another factor as well. I, I think I read, this has to be determined, I would not take this to the bank, but my recollection was it was Fort Myers Beach that on seasonal chipped in somewhat. So, you know, this unfortunately is part of a bigger discussion with the county, but, you know, my feeling is, and convey this to Carl, I talked about this last year, that this is a county responsibility, and God bless them, it's their responsibility, and that's why they get the money, that's why they get the forty-three million dollars a year from us, and it's not just a matter that we're a donor community, it's their responsibility. Easier said than done, you know, of course, as Carl said last year, it turned out, well, if you want to take out fifty, we'll take out fifty too, so.
So, you're going to make that motion, Pete?
Well, no, I don't think there's any motion, as much as it's just an initiative, I would suggest that Carl think about it and come back to us, but I think what he would be thinking about would be broaching and get more facts about what other municipalities do or don't pay, and put it in that context, rather than we're just a donor community, and that we want to, in effect, regularize our position with that of the other communities. But I would let Carl, so to speak, and staff, you know, with him, you know, do the research and see what, you know, what we can say.
And try and get as close to apples to apples, like amount of routes, amount of stops, so on.
Exactly, exactly, and I'm, and, and there's more to say, but, for another day, about how Lee County makes substantial contributions to the infrastructure of the bus system in other places as well, not just in buses, but in, you know, remote terminals and stuff like that, but enough said.
So, no, but Pete, to your point, and I'm going to drill down here, because I know Anne wants numbers, are we okay with that for now? And we can, and we can get to this hundred and fifty thousand, zero ninety-seven by September, or what?
Well, no, I would not cut that, I, I don't want, my, I'm not making a motion that would have us cut bus service, so I would not take that number out. I'm, I'm making, I don't know if it's a motion or just a sense of council, that Carl look into the possibility of regularizing our situation with the other municipalities where they don't pay Lee County. If that, if that's correct.
Do we need a vote?
Well, yeah, and, and I really would like to look, because I tell you, I'm down Benita Beach Road a lot, and that one fifty, I, if, if you see one person on that bus, you're lucky.
It is a chicken and egg thing, as I think it's actually, your wife did, Peter, or was it you?
My wife and daughter.
Yeah, yeah, two, two years ago, when, when you have a system that runs irregularly, it's not, you know, reliable, you don't know exactly where it's going, you've got a chicken and egg thing going on, and people don't use it, they don't use it, so I don't, I don't know which it is, but there's an element to that.
Right.
So, it'd take it three hours to get to Fort Myers Beach.
Close to two. Yeah, close to two.
So, we understand our direction, that the number will stay where it's at right now.
Yes.
And we will make an effort to see if there's possible reductions, but the budget will be built with the number in it, and if we can get the savings later, then of course that's just a good thing to do.
All right, well, I'll say a little bit more on it, if you come back in a month, or whatever it takes, three weeks, are we still going to be on the hook for this one fifty if we just leave it in there for now?
If, if we get an agreement that we're not going to pay it, if, if we get that agreement with the county, then we stop paying it, I mean, it'll be a hundred and fifty thousand in your budget that you could reallocate somewhere else.
Yeah, right.
During the budget year, because again, we're trying to get this budget solidified so we can get it reprinted, and you've got a document that you're going to be dealing with in September during public hearings.
Thank you, Carl.
Well, my question is this, would us taking it out or cutting it in half, we can always add it in whenever we have to do it, but if we reduce it, does that give you any more leverage to talk to them with?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so.
But I like, but I like the idea, I mean, I did, I know, I like, I do, but I like it, yeah.
That's what we did last year, and we found out where we were at, so, yeah, anyway.
And let's leave it as is with Carl.
Get the research done first, then he will.
Yeah, look, here's what everybody else is doing. Like we would say to the kids when they were growing up, "No, honey, but thanks for asking," right? I mean, seriously. Yes, Carl?
Mr. Mayor, so, are there any other, I want to make sure we cover one thing in the council's budget, the city council's budget.
Sure.
That was done here as far as a cut, and I'm not sure how you're going to feel about it, but I don't want to walk away without having talked about it.
Sure, what page?
That is page four, and it's your travel and expense, or your travel and per diem, that's line item twenty-seven.
Oh, that four, okay.
Nope, I get it, okay. So, this line item was not enough for this fiscal year, we talked a little bit about travel and expense for council at the July seventh meeting, and a ways to possibly cut that, but we have cut that significantly, and the, what we did was, we proposed that every council member would be allocated fifteen hundred dollars for the whole year to do travel, all right? That may not be enough, you may want the mayor to have more, you know, we don't know, but we would like for you to discuss that, because we did go after that line item pretty heavily, and we wanted you to know that, and I want you to know that we did that, and I'm a little concerned, because I want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with that, or what you want to do with that, because, and I will tell you, just for the public's digestion here as well, is that it's important for our council members to travel, it's important for them to learn what other cities, what other entities do. So, travel is a necessary part of the responsibility you have. I do not want the council to be uncomfortable with a number that they may not be able to live up to, just doing normal council business, so I leave it to you.
Great, thanks, Carl. Council?
Yes, two questions, Carl, I, I know you guys aren't into the IRS, and we did bring that up at the budget meeting, about if we decided, personally, decided to take my travel and put it on my income tax for deduction, rather than going through the city, do, do we have an answer, does anybody know whether we can deduct that?
Audrey?
Uh, I, yeah, I'm not a tax lawyer or an accountant, I know IRS has specialized rules when you do certain volunteer work, and if that qualifies, it may be something that's taxed, that you could be able to get deduction if, depending on how you itemize, and I would certainly tell you to talk to your tax specialist, not anybody else.
I know, and I heard it before.
And I'll always say the same sentence there.
Yeah.
Please kick me out of that.
Okay.
Amy?
I think that's a good approach there, where we allocate to certain council people, but I do think the mayor should have a bigger travel budget, I don't know what that should be, let the mayor tell us, but I, I do think that, that we should, in some of these conventions or meetings, we should have at least one representative, and we could take turns doing that, I don't know whether, why, whether we really need more than one on a lot of these places, so I think we should be able to meet that, but I think it's a good approach personally.
All right, I had one other question. What about our trips, like to Tallahassee for government days, is, is that something that is mandatory for us to attend, or is that something, you know, looking at everything, can we still afford it? The travel?
For legislative days?
Yes.
I think that's up to council, I think it's important that elected officials show up in Tallahassee, because I think the state elected officials, just frankly, listen more to other elected officials, especially when your constituents are also their constituents. I think staff, they'll listen some to staff, but, but they also understand that we're hired guns, as opposed to council members who are elected by the same constituents. So, I think it's important, the number that goes up there, the number of you, I don't, I really don't have a good feel for whether, you know, seven's better than five, or, or whatever, I just don't know.
I just wanted to add in, I think the mayor point is extremely important, he's under the charter of the face of our city, so I would be much more generous, not generous, appropriately add in money for that, I don't know what the number is, but I would, definitely would. Do you have a sense from numbers, what is being spent?
Do we have a feel for?
I mean, any rough sense, not to the nickel.
I have, um.
Actually, it's all right.
Five thousand, seven thousand?
Yeah, something like that, five thousand.
Take the training budget and put there.
The what budget?
The training budget. Where do we get our training at? At those conferences, usually.
Yeah.
I get mine on the internet.
Well, and some of us, some of us are.
Fred?
Some of us are on what's called League of Cities Policy Committees, and they meet not only at the big meeting in the summer, but they have three or four meetings every year in, in Orlando. Now, I don't care about paying for it out of my pocket, but I want a letter from the city that says that I'm on official business, and I want to be able to get the six percent discount on the no sales tax and all that, I'll handle the IRS, but I think, but that's, if you're not on those policy committees, then we don't, we don't really do anything but get whatever all the other cities want to do. The one I'm on is utilities, resources, natural resources, and there's one other thing in it.
Yeah, but we also pay a lobbyist to do that, and I mean, nothing that the League of Cities or that policy, it goes before legislates, so I mean.
That legislate, the airplane is fairly costly.
No, I was referring more to those policy committees that you're on, it's not like it's a special, it's a special committee through the League of Cities, but they're not doing, they're not invoking any law that's not going before Tallahassee, so going to Tallahassee, in my opinion, is just as important as going to those quarterly meetings with the League.
Well, I, I would agree, I already said I would pay for it, I just want to be on official business, you know?
Now, to be clear, there are basically three line items involved when we participate with another agency, and let's just pick Florida League of Cities, just to pick one. So, you have a membership line, line item, the city pays a membership to belong, okay, to the Florida League of Cities, all right? But if you're going to go to the conference, you pay a registration fee, all right? That registration fee comes out of training, all right? So, what we're talking about, we're talking about travel and expense, is the actual travel itself.
Oh.
Okay, getting there and getting back, all right? That's, that's the travel.
And the hotel room, and the per diem.
Yes, and the hotel and per diem, that's correct.
Oh, I see, so those. Those numbers are added, the training and the kind of.
And many times, registration fee covers some lunches and breakfasts, or.
That's, that is true, when you, when you.
So, you can't double dip.
Register for that, that's right, so.
Food. Anne?
I do have the, the total that has been spent year to date through today on the travel and per diem is eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars for, for the city council budget.
Okay, thanks, Anne.
But if we, if we buck up the mayor's.
We still got a big one coming up.
Excuse me.
Florida League.
Florida League, the one in August, I mean, there's three of them going, I know for a fact, so I mean, that's going to be another.
Well, you guys figure it out, eh?
Okay. Did we, did we vote on that fifteen percent? Now, we're, we're trying to get a number on it.
Oh, I, I have that, yes, for the.
Let's finish this one first.
We could, let's finish that.
So, why, just, just for the sake of getting the ball off the tee, why don't we make it six thousand for the mayor and fifteen hundred for the others, but if some of the others don't travel, then the others can use it.
Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Like shooting fish in a barrel, but sounds all right.
I, I do think.
So, it's fifteen times six, plus six is twelve.
I do think we can take turns, I, I don't think we need everybody to go to, yeah, I think that's what we should, that, that's how you're going to control that budget.
But if you're on a committee, Amy, you have to go, that's part of the deal.
Well, I'm sure there's a different way.
For purposes, for purposes. Want me to resign from the committee?
No.
Okay.
Fred, let's not.
For purposes of the budget.
But you can, I mean, like you said, as long, I'm sorry.
I make, I make a motion of six plus one point five times six, that's twelve thousand, right? Is that right?
Twelve thousand for total, or twelve?
Yeah, total.
No, it's fifteen.
That'd be fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, thank you, okay.
Instead of the ten, instead of the ten-five.
I'll second the motion.
Instead of the eighteen, did I, did I increase it? Yeah, in, instead of the eighteen, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, okay, maybe that's wrong, I just threw it out there to get the ball rolling, it's in the fairway.
So, if one of us. What was stat, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
So, if one of us is not going to be traveling that much, then anybody, so, can use it.
Yeah, but you're not going to really know it until, like, right now, right now would be the only time, like, if you didn't go and I didn't go and Steve didn't go, then, hey, you guys can go.
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I just had to get this done.
Well, it's like calling special counsel without going through Audrey, right? You just don't know.
You can always, a few years ago, when we went up to Tallahassee to go to the governor
and cabinet for a flaw walk hearing on a matter legally, we rented a van from Enterprise, and three council members, and environmentalists, and my, yes, she remembers that day.
I was in the van.
So, we went up that way, you end up staying in a hotel, less comfortable.
Here's, here's my question real quick, is it eighteen thousand or ten-five? What is the budget number?
What is the, the revised budget number right now?
The revised is ten, ten thousand, five hundred. The parent budget was eighteen.
Okay, prepared it was eighteen, but you, you made a motion for fifteen.
I wasn't thinking that way, but that's what I did, yeah.
All right.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilman Corumba.
No.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Sacta.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, Pete, did you have?
I, I know.
No? Anne, did you want to?
I want to do a new release again.
Yeah, can I circle back on that?
Yes.
So, fifteen percent of the cost of individual coverage would be a thousand, fifty-one dollars.
Per person.
Per person.
Per month?
No, in total, for, for the year.
For everybody?
So, we're out, so really, to break this down, Pete, you propose fifteen percent?
Uh, per person, per, per council member.
Oh, okay.
We're already paying eight hundred.
No, we're paying nothing. Okay, 51.
For the year?
For the year, per person.
Well, um, my only thoughts on this is, um, you know, this is basically, you're kind of looking at the people that you attract to be candidates. This is just one of the perks of, along with the little bit of money that, you know, we get. I, I've already voted twice not to increase how much money, you know, we pay ourselves.
Right.
So this is actually more of actually doing a reduction on how much we're paying ourselves.
Okay.
You know, I, I think we've done good at holding the line as far as increasing our costs. And then, you know, to get to the travelage, uh, traveling in per diem, um, you know, there's, I know we're allowed to put in, like, for all the meetings I've gone to in downtown Fort Myers, Cape Coral, I've never subtracted, I've never asked for any of that back. If we're going to a conference, that's one thing, it's further away, you know, I'll take the mileage on that. But all these other meetings I've gone to, I've never asked for mileage on. You know, I just kind of figured that, you know, that's, I'm taking that out of my pay. So I, I just feel that, you know, we're kind of dropping how much, you know, we're paying ourselves and, and really, we've been holding the line. There's been calls before for increasing how much we get paid and, and, you know, I've been saying, no, we don't need to do that, because when you look at the total package, I, I think it's all right. And, you know, you can attract, you know, well-qualified candidates to do something. But you're really going to kind of start limiting the working-class people from wanting to do a job like this. And, you know, I, I just don't think that's something we want to really push forward, so.
Well said, Mike. I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. Pete, did you have some more items?
No, I'm done, no.
We're done, we're done.
We're done, but yet, I did want to, Ann, I'm going to just real, real quick before I lose the thought. Carl?
Yes, sir.
We voted as a council, correct? To increase the communications tax, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, so that ship has sailed, correct? In other words, yes, you, you, right?
Last year, yes.
Right, so that ship has sailed. I didn't miss it. It's not in here anywhere?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted, thank you.
That increase is in effect.
I understand.
As is the other one.
So even though I'm still against it, there's nothing I can do about it. That ship has sailed.
Did we vote in favor of the last 5%? But we did, we didn't go the whole route, though, did we? We, we did, the last...
That, that's on the agenda to, today, but it can go to another agenda.
Okay, so there is another increment that we can...
That's what I was...
A half of, a half percent.
And that requires another vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, I guess, so there, that's where I am. That's my next point.
It's on the electricity franchise fee.
Where is that, Ann? Where is it? Page number or line number or something?
It's not in the book, it's just an agenda item. It's just an agenda item for today, but we certainly can postpone that to...
And what is that number? What does that equate to, dollars?
For a full year, it'd be $300,000.
$300,000. If we leave it alone.
No, if you were to increase it that half percent.
Okay, Ann, let's go back. What was officially adopted by council?
Thank you.
Percentage of what kind of number was going to come in?
Okay.
And then what the limit was and what didn't get.
The council originally voted to increase the electricity franchise fee by 1 and 1/2%.
And that generated, will generate what?
At, at this point, though, what happened was they could only go up 1% because the charter had a limitation. So when you were able to see the ordinance, that was an, adopt an ordinance, so that six, ordinance number 1615 was consistent with ordinance number 0008, which was the FPNL franchise, it only went up 1% instead of 1 and 1/2%.
By city charter?
Uh, no, by the FPNL franchise.
But we also have it in our charter that it couldn't go up by more than 1%, right?
No, we have in our charter, we have to do it by ordinance as opposed to resolution.
Okay.
But, but that originally 1 and 1/2% would have generated about $900,000 in a year, for, in a full year. So as a result, the increase was 1%. And so for a full year, that will generate 600,000.
Right, okay.
So if you go up the extra half percent, it would generate the additional 300,000 to get to that 900,000.
So I apologize, but I'm going to ask it again. Is there anything on that we need to vote on or resolve before September?
We don't need to resolve it before September because the way the FPNL franchise, it's floating as far as whenever you put it in, the franchise dictates how long it takes for it to go into place. This is different than the communication service tax, which is where you need to adopt it before August for the fiscal year.
Right, okay.
Okay, so let me respond on a financial side on that. So, um, if you want to reflect the, the additional revenue in next year's budget, 1718, you would want to make a decision on that, preferably with, within this timeframe on the budget, so it can be reflected in there. But you are not required to make that change at this time. You can wait if you want, or not do it at all. It's, it's up to council. You originally have voted and approved 1 and 1/2%. We only were able to do 1%. The question is, is the council still committed to picking up that additional half cent as well as what Ann said, the 300,000 dollars?
And we want to do that tonight, or we want to do that when?
We, we...
No, it's not.
You can do it at another meeting.
But it will have to be resolved.
If, if you want to do it, yes.
Okay.
At, at the last meeting, the July meeting, it was requested to come back to another meeting for discussion.
Gotcha, okay.
When's, as soon as we can do it. Now?
Pursuant to the charter, whenever you do it, I believe, or not charter, the franchise, I believe it takes FPNL about three months to get it onto the billed revenue, plus the actual write-offs and the timing. So it's about a three to four-month period.
But we're eligible to do it tonight if we wanted to, to get that vote.
To authorize me to draft an ordinance tonight, I have not drafted an ordinance, did not adopt anything until you had two readings.
Okay, so I have a question, Audrey. So council's already adopted an ordinance at 1 and 1/2%. Isn't that accurate?
No.
It's not, it only, we only did it at 1% in the ordinance.
Because, right, you're not able to increase more than 1% per year.
So if we're all in agreement...
Carl, you are correct, our original one, we did 1 and 1/2, then we had to come back a month or two later and said, do it again. Because they found out, yes, one could be done.
You vote, you voted to do the, the increase, and then when Audrey was drafting, the ordinance was one that was determined that we couldn't go above.
And you can go up to one more percentage, you can go up a total of 5% under the franchise. You cannot go to, say, 6%. You can't do this every year. You can only do this for the, up to the 5%, which would then put you at the same level as all the other local governments nearby.
So we can make a motion tonight to pick up the additional half percent or not pick up the additional half percent?
You can make a motion to direct me to prepare the ordinance so that you would have it on your agenda in September.
So how about this? I'm going to make a motion that we do not pick up the additional half percent.
That you do not authorize at this time.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to not pick up that half percent. It's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think that is...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Fred, then Pete, yep.
I, I voted to do it originally, but I think that we need to take this year to come up with our priorities and then if we need, and then we can address it next year. So I think there was two people that voted against it last time, so now there'll be three probably.
Okay.
I have a different view, which is, I'd actually like to see what this budget looks like in September, when it all settles. We've made a lot of decisions tonight and see what it looks like. Did I say December? September.
Same thing.
Yeah, September. So I'd like to leave that option open, to look at it with actual numbers in front of us. Because, you know, the, the reason, um, that we did it was to pay off a deficit and put us on a pay-as-you-go basis. Same reason Ronald Reagan did it when he was governor of California. So, but I, I just think making, in my view, making the decision in a vacuum without seeing Ann having the benefit of putting all the numbers in front of us makes more sense to me.
Greg, did you have something?
I kind of had the same concept, was let's look and see what the numbers are, do we need, do we need the money?
Right, yeah.
You know, and again, I think, kind of going back to what Amy said in the first little bit, this morning, or this afternoon, it seems like this morning, uh, this afternoon. What is our priorities? I mean, because, let's, let's, let's pull this out real quick. I know it's 10:06 and I'll be as quick and as brief as I can. We've, we've cut the general fund down. We taxed, taxed staff with bringing it down from 13 to, say, 12. Round numbers, we're not going crazy here. Today, we didn't bring it back up to the 13. So there's going to be some savings in there. Is that enough, the question I think we have to ask, and Amy's asked already, is that enough to put into some type of fund as pay as you go? So do we need to put more into that fund so a capital project, whether it's a 41, or the quadrant study or whatever, do we want to build that faster?
Right.
And how do we build that faster? And if that is building it faster by doing the, uh, the FPNL fund, that's what we need to decide on.
Right.
So, so I agree with Pete. Let's wait and see what the true number is after all the dust settles on this in September, and then let's make that decision. How fast do we want to grow that savings account for capital projects in the future?
Okay, but I, there's been a motion and a second. Is there further discussion, Mike?
I have a question. So the .5 is going to equate to another 300,000.
That's right.
What does that relate to in the millage rate? If, if we were to change the millage rate to gain an extra 300,000, what would we be changing the millage rate to?
About 3. Yeah, it's going to like .84.
Yeah.
Okay, because I mean, that's, that's the number that everybody sees. They get a thing mailed to their house saying, you know, they can see that, hey, you know, taxes were raised on me, that they were at, you know, .817, two or three, whatever we're at, and, you know, now they're raising it to, you know, .85. You know, everybody sees that. When, when we do it on the electric bill and the communication tax, it's kind of like we're hiding it. So if we're going to, if we're going to take, you know, raise money, raise taxes, I think it should be out there in the open. The most, you know, visible spot is right there on the millage rate. Everybody's going to see that and they're going to know.
But that's term limited, isn't it?
I concur.
Well, the only problem with, I, I don't disagree with it. The only problem with that right now is we can't raise those without, you can raise the millage now, even though we've set the trim, it's just basically, almost takes an act of God to get it done. But you can, we could raise it, and I think it's too late for that. And I agree and I disagree, Mike, only because, you know, we talked about tonight, the gas taxes. There's almost 11 or 12 cents in gas taxes that people don't realize that we get. Unless you really pay attention to the gas prices in San Carlos Park to Benita Springs, okay, you know there's four or five cents deference. You don't know that it's coming to Benita. You don't know if it's a transport fee because it costs more to bring it down here from the refinery. You don't know that.
Well, and I thought, is that specifically Benita, those gas taxes? Because I always wondered about that. Or is that like a, is that the county?
Benita gets a gas state.
I know, I know we get a portion of it, but I mean, do we only get a portion of what was actually, you know, sold in Benita? Is the 5 and the 6 our tax or is that...
It's county-wide.
County-wide.
It's county-wide and we get our share of it.
So even...
Our gas is cheap, higher here.
It doesn't matter if you buy the gas in Benita Springs.
Why is it still high?
Because it's being transported from Tampa or Miami, right?
I always remember to buy it in Lee County so we get our...
But our, our...
The closer you are to those two cities, the cheaper the gas.
Yeah, but is, is it proportioned that way or is it proportioned by sales in each municipality?
It's based on population and lane miles.
Okay, so it still doesn't, I was, I was just wondering that.
Actually, it depends on the, uh...
Because I was wondering, you know, as, because Benita, you know, we do have higher gas prices here than in San Carlos or Fort Myers.
It's a market decision.
Well, I was just wondering if, because we're higher, people that are commuting, you know, it behooves them to go pay the rates up in Fort Myers. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't losing out on gas tax money by people buying up there instead of down here because of our higher prices already.
So we're not, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with Greg. I, you know, I mean, to me, this is not a matter of hiding something, it's a matter of finance and what's appropriate for finance with where we want to go. We need to clean a line of sight of that. We don't have that line of sight now. And, you know, just to refresh everybody's recollection, for what it's worth, anybody, we're still lower than everybody, even with the increase, we're still lower than every municipality around us. So, I mean, just context. Doesn't mean you have to agree, I'm just, I'm just...
Wouldn't it be nice to be zero and just have our millage rate reflect on what we, you know, spent?
Right, I mean, if you go that way, another notion is let's just get rid of taxes altogether and then start, start from scratch and see where we go. Yeah, I mean, in other words, have no millage. There's, there's a requirement of law for a certain amount of millage. So that's the kind of discussion I want to have. In other words, if we're going to say that, let's have no taxes at all, and that'll cause us to have a conversation about what are our priorities? What do we want to do? What, what are our responsibilities as a government? What are we trying to create in Benita Springs? And I think that's a more, in my view, well, it's just a thought, just a thought.
Well, and I'll just add one more thing. I was in the minority. Obviously, we approved a 1.5% increase in the communications tax. I was in the minority. This is my opportunity to say no to the half percent, and that's why I brought it forward. And there's been a second on that. Is there further discussion on this point? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Karamba?
No.
Councilman DeWitt?
No is voting this down, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No is voting no down, yeah.
Yes.
No.
Councilman Slacta?
No.
Let's, let's, let's be clear on that.
Yeah.
I have made a motion to reject the 1, the .5%.
You are making a motion to reject any increase in electricity franchise fee rates for this year?
The 1% ship has sailed.
It's a half percent.
Right, I am now making the motion to reject the half percent increase. So a yes vote is to reject and no vote is to accept another tax increase.
Well, no.
Well, no, to, to implement the tax increase.
No, it is not.
To authorize the, the attorney to prepare.
Neither one.
No, it is not.
Neither one, it's neither one.
You said you vote against, you vote against it.
Yeah, you just vote against it. And here, well, here's a procedural question.
Yeah, right, I know where you're going.
If we vote this down tonight, September, can Councilwoman Flynn say, I direct you to, to do an ordinance for this?
I make a motion for city council to authorize the city attorney.
Well, yeah, whatever, you know, the, what I was getting at.
Yes.
And you can actually do that at any meeting.
No, I agree with you.
But we can also vote to reject this and not implement it.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
My point was, a month later, we can always vote to bring it back on.
This is, I agree that this is not saying that we are going to implement it. We're just gonna say we're just rejecting your motion to not implement it, so I'm voting...
Well, not implement, it's nothing to implement, it doesn't exist.
Well, he's saying, he's, his motion is to not implement it.
The half percent.
Right.
No, it's not implementing right now.
Not implementing anything.
Do not go forward at this time. Right.
Yeah, but it's not going forward at all right now anyway.
That's right.
There's nothing in place right now to do this.
In other words, I'm about to make a notion, motion to not implement a whole bunch of other taxes.
Agreed.
Yeah.
The mayor.
You know, you know what I mean, Mr. Mayor, right now, there's...
No, I hear what you're saying, but I guess I'm, I'm hearing it and perceiving it different. If I'm wrong, I will, I will withdraw it.
There's nothing in the pipeline to put this in...
Additional half percent.
Not unless we make a motion for it at a later date, or at this date.
I will withdraw it.
Okay.
Thank you. Very good. Were there other items, council?
Too hard to vote on, anyway.
Yes, Anne.
Mr. Mayor, there are still some items that were discussed at the July meeting that have been identified in these sheets that haven't been voted on here this evening.
Like what?
Page seven.
Big sheets or small sheets?
Big sheet, oh, it's legal sheets.
Big sheets.
It's in the, in the CIP.
I don't have a page seven.
It's not CIP.
It goes from six to, I'm sorry, my mistake, my mistake, my mistake, sorry.
It's highlighted in yellow. All, all the, all the numbers that are highlighted in yellow were things that were a result of that meeting. So the contingency, the reduction of the contingency, 100,000. Increase in the urban design, 225,000, and then also moving from the carryover column, the 50,000 from the recreations or the parks master plan up to the urban design. So that's the carryover column plus what's in the 2008 column.
We talked about the concept, no motion was made.
That's right.
So I make a motion to approve everything in yellow here.
I second it.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion?
As, as long as we keep a list of what we...
Correct.
Yep.
And understanding that the, Mr. Mayor, so the yellow does go on to the next page?
Yes.
Just so you understand that.
Right.
And we do understand also that changes you made tonight that impact the numbers in yellow will be adjusted accordingly.
Right.
All right.
Very good. Further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Okay.
Then, then on the last page of the green sheet, there are staff recommendations, so there's various motions that were requested, and they relate to all the other items that were in the earlier pages, pages two, three, four, five, and six.
Which green sheet?
I'm totally lost.
The one that has the small pages behind it?
No, the green sheet that was in front of the big sheets.
Oh, that was, I think that was this one, I think. 17080296?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Could they make, could they make one motion to cover?
Hard to follow the staff recommendations, the changes outlined in the recommendation.
Well, we talked about some of these, huh? Wounded Warriors, not this year. Talked about the monument. Talked about the mi, I know what.
But, but council needs to accept all the changes that staff proposed, the, the reductions.
Oh, so moved. Second.
There's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Anne?
And if I can ask one more, and this is very detailed, but just so you understand, we, staff does not make any changes to the budget since the July 7th meeting unless council approved them, so that's why we're asking for these motions. It did come to our attention, we had two, Matt, exotic removal costs within park, park departments, Oak Creek Park and the Windsor Park, that were actually budgeted as maintenance and not as exotic removal. And we do think it's important that they be shown in the budget as exotic removal.
So moved.
Second. Roll, further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCorumba? Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Anne?
I am good, thank you very much.
Wow, great job, Anne.
Carl?
Mayor and council, thank you so much. We are going to redo the budget based upon all the work you've done tonight. We thank you very much for your time on this.
Anne. Thank you, Carl.
And we're gonna public comment at this time? Are there members from the public that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Okay, cooked dinner, did the dishes, was watching you on TV, had to come back because of the bus.
Are there leftovers?
No, they're not, it was very good.
Please?
So I wanna thank you for all the good work you did, but this bus thing, we have been down this road before three votes for years. The biggest value of the bus, whether you see 150, the big whale rolling down the road, empty, early in the morning and late at night, it's, it's got people. But is the passport van service, if you live three quarters of a mile off a bus route and you're handicapped, the value is there. And two of the biggest opponents of the bus service, Patrick McCourt and Bill Lonkart, voted for the bus because we went down the road on this and said, Pat, go see if you can do it privately, cheaper, different, better. And you know what? He found out it costs a lot more money. So we are getting money chipped in from various programs at the county, and I understand what you're talking about, that the other cities may not be paying what we pay. But also, we're a very suburban community, we're not walking yet, you know, we're not biking yet. So when we get to that point, maybe we can, really, I feel very strongly about that handicap busing. A lot of the seniors at Millennium House get picked up, they're safe. The Lark people who work in our parks, I hope we kept that in, them in. Lark, they, they get rides on the transport van, passport van, that is just very important. And anyhow, I thank you for that. Thanks for the lights, yay, Pennsylvania Avenue.